Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Study Session for Monday, February ten, two thousand twenty. We'll call the meeting to order, and we have as items for discussion, the review of the fourth quarter two thousand nineteen police report, first on the docket. For this, we have our illustrious chief, Michael Zarro.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. It is once again time for the fourth quarter report. Some of the things I'm going to go through initially, I'm going to go through kind of quick because there's some items that I think will generate a little more discussion further on in the slides. As you can see, calls for service, and Councilmember Farmer, just since you're new to this, so the calls for service, that number is, the number is literally the calls for service that our officers respond to in a quarter. And you could see, third quarter was fifteen, and we're some, and down to fourteen for the fourth quarter. And also, this is, you'll hear me talk about districts. These are the districts, they've been in place for as long as I can remember, but divided up into police districts, one through six, and you can kind of think of it as starting from the south end of the city and working north. And here's the crime numbers for this fourth quarter, and you can see for, in large part, property crime is down, you know, significantly again, and I'll have a visual representation of that in a graph here shortly. Aggravated assaults and simple assaults under persons crimes are still on the rise, and the persons crimes or the assaults also include, even though there aren't victims attached to it, the, some of the shootings that we have, or drive-by shootings, or people shooting, where we have reports of shots fired, and we find shell casings, but there's no victim. And we have been tracking those actively through the, with the ATF. And this is, represents the comparison of population in each district to the amount of crime in each district, and ideally, if it was evenly proportioned, the blue bars would match the red line that's there. And you can see there is, the one district where it's disproportionate the most is in District Four, and that's our center, our business districts. And that's with both person and property, but primarily property crimes. Now, person crimes, it's nice, in two thousand nineteen, what you'll see is overall, we did have an increase of persons crimes. We have seen over the past two quarters, a significant decline, which is nice to see, but it's, we had a lot to make up for the first couple quarters of the year, especially the second quarter. Well, that's when the weather turns nice, and people have been cooped up all winter long, and they get out in the sun, get a little alcohol in them, and things, yes, things get bad. In Western State Hospital, I've, you know, we still want to present this, I have heard a couple of presentations from the CEO on their new STAR ward that's out on the grounds, and STAR is an acronym. I don't remember what the acronym's for, but it's, the theory behind it is similar to the high-profile offender program that the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office was using. What they did was looked at the violent crime within Western State Hospital, the assaults, and they looked at the people that were committing the assaults, and they found that, you know, it's not surprisingly, it's a small amount of people that were creating the most assaults and the most chaos around them. So what this ward will do is remove them from where they're at, and put them in this STAR ward where they are, they have higher supervision, closer supervision, there's more staff there, and more programs and more activities to keep them busy. With the idea being that you can remove them, and not only does that additional or more intense supervision reduce their assault behavior, but it keeps things calmer on the wards where they were at, and stirring things up. So that just opened two weeks ago, or maybe last Monday, and they have two patients in there so far, and they're expecting three more this week, so, and that's even, I mean, we saw this decline in the fourth quarter even before they opened the STAR ward. So I do think it holds some promise for reducing some of the assaults that are out there. And Councilmember Farmer, that, I know that the other council members heard me say this before, it's been a couple of years, but at one time, the assaults in Western State Hospital accounted for a significant percent of Lakewood's overall persons crime. So it was, that sort of generated this focus on the assaults that occur there. I can say that there, I can't really get into much detail, they are under investigation. What was the speculation? There is that speculation. One person lived, yes. There was two, two people that fire responded to treat, one of them survived, and one did not, and the speculation is that it was a drug overdose. But the medical examiner is going to have to be the one to make that, that call. Well, at least an acting one, so. But, and I've also recently agreed to be on their governing board out at Western State Hospital, they meet quarterly, and this morning actually happened to be the first meeting, so I'm hoping by getting a little more, a little closer eyes on, that we'll have a little more influence and say over what goes on. Property crime, we continue to see the sharp decline, and I do think that this has a lot to do with some of the emphasis that we placed on retail theft, that's some of the carryover from that. Also, maybe some of the, a product of the economy being better, and just the, some other environmental circumstances, but I'll talk a little bit more about what we're going to be doing with property crime as well going into the year. And then total crime, and if you look, you know, the property crime graph and total crime, they mirror each other pretty close. So our, if, because you're looking at crime numbers by volume, our property crimes, and this, you could say this about almost any jurisdiction, our property crimes dictate our total crime, and our total crime rate. Now, this is one, I want to go back about, you know, five years, and look at what the total trend is, and try and get a visual representation of what that looked like. And you can see overall, there's a slight reduction in the past four years, five years, but it's the persons crimes that are really, we would, you could see the, from eighteen to nineteen, the significant increase, and that has a lot to do with the gun crimes that I was talking about. But even with that, we have seen a decrease over, you know, from where we started in two thousand fifteen. Now, I know there's been some, there's been a desire by the council to know how we compare to other jurisdictions, and it's really kind of difficult to compare apples to apples. We were able to pull these numbers from the, the numbers from the Department of Justice that they put out. They aren't the same as what, as the statistics I present to you, but these are as close to apples to apples as I could get. And specifically with property crime, I think last quarter, there was a request from one of the council members, I think Mayor Anderson maybe, about with the investment we have in property crime investigation that many other jurisdictions don't do, is there a payoff? And I looked for some, you know, thought of some neighboring jurisdictions that, you know, maybe along I-5 and other similar size to compare to, and we are in the middle of the road, if you look at other Pierce County jurisdictions, namely Puyallup, Tacoma, and Fife, we are significantly less than them, and we're in the neighborhood of some of the others. The graph on the right, or the chart on the right, one of the things that we found as we were doing this is, you know, when you want to compare crime rates, you're talking about crimes per thousand people. So one of the variables when you're doing that, if you want to compare, is the number of people. And so we looked at the population changes in these different jurisdictions that we compared to over the past five years, and you can see, a lot of the jurisdictions changed significantly, you know, adding thousands of people where we were relatively flat. So if you want to, you know, compare over time, that's kind of hard to do, to really compare apples to apples, because the jurisdiction, or the populations of different jurisdictions change. And if you go back to, our crime analyst actually went back to two thousand seven, there are drastic changes in populations in some of these other jurisdictions, up almost fifty percent in some of them. So we're even, going back to two thousand seven, we're, going back to nineteen ninety-six, we're pretty flat. But that's, yeah, correct, but that is something to consider when we do talk about crime rates as compared to other jurisdictions. Now, one of the things, when, given that property crimes drive our crime rates, what we looked at was what, you know, in that, that initial chart that I showed you, larceny is the, probably the highest number that contributes to our property crime rate, which would mean that's the highest crime, or the most frequent crime that contributes to our crime rate. So we looked at the different kinds of larceny and where they occur, and you can see the two most significant are shoplifting and theft from vehicle. And the most, the district where both those stand out is in District Four, and that's our business center, the town center area. And with vehicle prowls, it also includes District Six, but that, there's still quite a few businesses there, and apartments, and when you're talking about vehicle prowls, apartments are prime targets as well, anytime you have a large concentration of vehicles. So, and many of you remember Pred Pole, we're going away from Pred Pole largely for financial reasons, I don't know that we're getting necessarily the bang for the buck. But what we want to do is look for some statistical or data-driven replacement, and what we found was, was this, and this was just doing our own in-house analysis. So what we want to do with this information, with, you know, during the coming year, is not just at the holiday shopping time, but throughout the year, increase our presence in the town center and in District Six, and also do a mass education on theft prevention, particularly from vehicles. And we want to not just bring in businesses, but also apartment managers, and try and encourage them to educate their tenants. And even, we're going to create handouts and signs that they can put up in their apartment complexes to give people tips on preventing vehicle prowl. And there's the two basics, there's lock your car, and don't leave anything in sight, inside the vehicle. And notice, I didn't say don't leave anything of value in the vehicle. If they see a bag, and it could be full of whatever garbage you can think of, they'll, they'll imagine there's gold in there, and they'll break a window to get at it. So those are going to be the two, the two primary focuses of the education, is lock your car and don't leave anything in sight, inside the car. And I think that, just doing that education might have an impact on that. Now, moving on to, moving on to accidents by quarter, you can see we had our typical fourth quarter increase, which, when you think about the weather in the fourth quarter, that's not surprising. Our spike this time did not go up as high as previous fourth quarters, which is promising, that also comes on the heels of another speed emphasis that we did. And the speed emphasis was in December, there were ten locations, and the same as the previous speed emphasis, there was mandatory tickets issued for eight miles an hour or more over the speed limit, which, and eight miles an hour is pretty generous. And we posted it on social media, we posted the roads that we were going to be at, so we were very transparent about it, and it resulted in nine hundred and thirty-eight tickets issued and nine hundred and thirteen contacts. The reason the tickets issued is higher is when an officer issues a ticket, if there's one for speed and one for no insurance, those count as two tickets. So when we draw stats, that's how those are counted. And then there also generated six warrant arrests and two DUIs out of it as well. So I think it's, that is promising, and you'll probably see more of those as, you know, as the year goes on too, not just at school time, but even sooner, maybe as the weather changes and, and people start, you know, driving faster. I think we've seen a decrease, but I, recently, there was a court ruling that affected our ability to impound vehicles. So that, that effectively did away with our, we haven't formally taken it off the books, but that effectively did away with the program. Yes, sir? Correct. Right. It is, it is definitely more about citizen input and complaints that come into the traffic division, either by email, phone, or My Lakewood Three One One. That definitely drives the locations more than where tickets are issued. And one question that we had last time too, about, when I talked about the speed emphasis and the reduction in collisions, is the impact that has, could have collectively on insurance rates in our zip code. And I called my personal insurance agent and just asked what goes into determining that, and he said there are like two hundred and some variables that not even he is privileged to know all of. They come from On High and State Farm, and, yeah, exactly, yeah. So I think there's a magic eight ball somewhere that, that they determine it, or help, you know, determine those. But he did say that one of those factors is the number of collisions in your area. So if we can drive down collisions in Lakewood, I do think that that could have at least the potential to impact insurance rates in our region. Might be a stretch, and might not be significant, but it's, you know, in addition to the safety issue, I think it's, it's worth considering. So bars in Lakewood, for the longest time, we, I would present this slide as well, calls for service at bars. And because there was a time when we had enough bars and nightclubs here in Lakewood where we would have to have, that had problems, that had fights and shootings and everything else, we would have to have op-duty officers standing at the doors, outside the doors of the bars, every Friday and Saturday night to dissuade some of the problems, and even that didn't work a lot of times. So we are to the point now where we do still have bars, but you can see, this is in a year, the total calls for service on the right. There are more bars in Lakewood, but these are the top five, so even, you know, the fifth most is only four, and Chips Casino and, yeah, the Chips and Palace Casinos, which are right next to each other, those account for ten. That's in a year, and those are usually minor calls involving just unwanted people or drunks, so. That could be too. But I do think it's worth, you know, it's worth noting the change in environment here, and our crime analyst pulled it up just, just to look at, because we hadn't done it in a while, and thought it was worth sharing. Yeah. When we, you know, contacting the military every so often to talk about putting a bar off limits because of all the problems we're having, and we haven't had to do that in a long time. Now, one, one of our, one of the big successes that we had for, I don't want to say minor, this, I mean, it's, this is a nuisance for a lot of people. But we had a very prolific tagger that was operating in Lakewood last summer, a couple sets, but this one in particular, last summer and in the fall. And we made two sets of arrests, one last summer that I briefed on in the third quarter report, it was two guys that we'd caught, and then this person, who was actually caught in the act by one of our officers, who had the wherewithal to record him, while, sneak up on him, record him while he was painting, fantastic evidence. And you will, I mean, you could see some of this in multiple locations throughout District Four and the town center area. And this is the person that, that was responsible, yes, so. Oh, what's that? That's, that's the gray jumpsuit, oranges for felonies. Well, he did, so he, he was sentenced to a hundred and eighty days, and this, a lot of the, the, the reason for that is the work that our investigators put into connecting all these cases, and all these, these different incidents of graffiti, because he paints, he paints the same thing every time, they all do, they have their own little monikers that they paint every time. And you can see his criminal history was almost exclusively vandalism, going back, he's nineteen, going back six years, and it's just the same thing, it's always been tagging. And he was sentenced to a hundred and eighty days, well, excuse me, first he was sentenced to work group, he no-showed for his first day of work group. So the judge then sentenced him to a hundred and eighty days of incarceration, and that is concurrent, or excuse me, consecutive with whatever he gets on his felony charges, and he does have some felony charges pending for some narcotics that he had on him as well. And he does have some felony charges pending for some narcotics that he had on him as well. So, and, so that means that because it's consecutive, the time he's doing now will not count for the time that he gets for any, any of the other stuff. So he was, he was given a chance for work crew, he, he couldn't even do that. So I think he's where he belongs and for as much, you know, as it's, you know, quote unquote, just graffiti, he was a, he was a prolific nuisance and caused thousands of dollars in property damage around Lakewood. And the, again, it was a lot of detailed work, not just by our investigators, but by our CSOs and our officers, all keeping an eye out for him and connecting all these dots. So just fantastic work that resulted in putting somebody that, I know at least one of you heard a lot about over the, the fall, so. With the holiday season, it's also one of the bigger times for some of our community events and charity events. Two of the big ones were coffee and cocoa with a cop and then shop with an officer. Coffee with a cop is a national thing that we, we did for the first time last year. We just set up in a Starbucks and said, come and have a cup of coffee with us, ask whatever you want, we'll just be here hanging out. And then after we did that, some parents got ahold of us and said, you know, how about something for kids? So we started cocoa with a cop last year and we did it again this year. And it's something where we opened up the station. We had just allowed anybody, any kids that wanted to come in, to come in and hang out with us, have cocoa. We gave tours of the station and it was just, I think, a thoroughly positive event. And everybody enjoyed it, to include the officers that worked, worked it. So that was fantastic and we'll be doing more of that. And then shop with an officer is something that the Officers Charity funds every year in partnership with Walmart, who gives us significant discounts to, to take somebody from a nominated family and do Christmas shopping. And I think this year the charity spent close to $14,000 at Walmart, and that's with the discount. So it's, and I participated in that almost every year and it's, it, it's thoroughly rewarding to, to, to do that. It's, you know, the, I think the, the story I've always told is the first year I did it when the, the girl that I was shopping with said she just wanted to get some pillows, so her and her sister didn't have to share anymore. I mean, you hear stories like that and these are, these are families that are, are just desperately in need. And it, it really makes their holiday season to be able to do this for them. Our special response team and Councilmember Farmer, this is what was, I guess typically referred to as SWAT, but this was our first year in 2019 of having our own team, the SRT. There was a call out, a couple of pre-planned incidents that we participated in. And then a lot of training too, and not just training that they participated in, but training that they provided to our officers and to officers from other agencies. And we did have a couple of significant incidents in the fourth quarter. Two homicides and the first was one where it was two people that knew each other and they, it was essentially charged as an accident. One person shot the other, initially told us, or called 911 and said his friend shot himself. But when officers got there, it was clear he was shot in the back. So the, the story unfolded pretty quickly or, and we were able to determine exactly what happened. And the, he was arrested and booked and the prosecutor charged it as manslaughter, which is like, it's charged as an accident. So that is still pending trial. The other one that, and this one garnered quite a bit of attention, was the McCord Mart homicide, where it was the robbery where just senseless, absolutely senseless. And the suspect stabbed the, the store owner and she died there at the scene. This was just tragic and a case of some very good police work as well, where we were able to, our forensic services folks were able to actually get DNA off of the barbecue sauce bottle that the suspect grabbed. And then that came back, he had a criminal history, so that came back to a known person. So some outstanding police work that unfortunately had to be done because of a very tragic event. Uh, he's still incarcerated and just pending trial. There was also a shooting at the Domino's on Silicon Boulevard, or it was called out in the Domino's parking lot. He was actually, the suspect went to, on his break from work, went to the, the bar that's right adjacent to there to meet women, was hitting on somebody's girlfriend, that somebody, and he got into an argument outside that carried over to the Domino's parking lot and he shot the, the person. That was again, when we first got it, was a whodunit, but putting, you know, using video footage and, and talking to witnesses, investigators were able to identify the suspect and got him in custody. And that was not a fatality. But stupid things like that, I mean, you think about our, our violent crime rates and it's things, I mean, look at the, the first homicide I talked about, two people with, playing with guns, and there was a homicide from the third quarter where, you know, two friends are here in the car, in a car, and the guy in the backseat's playing with a gun and it goes off and shoots and kills his friend in the front seat. That count, those, those are homicides that we had last year that, that it's just frustrating that, that things like that are driving up our violent crime. We've been, you know, we still keep tabs on adult family homes and how many are at it. There's four more that, that came to Lakewood. You know, we've, nothing's really changed. We, there have been no incidents of note where we, like we saw when they first got on our radar, where there was somebody that, you know, with a, a violent past that committed a felony assault, like, or homicide like we had seen. But they do keep proliferating. And then, and then finally, the, our Special Operations Unit conducted an investigation into some complaints that we received about drug dealing and prostitution at the Deja Vu. They went in and after receiving the complaint and they verified the activity that was going on that was alleged. And after a few months of this investigation, not only were criminal charges filed, but many code violations were noted as well. In doing all that, it was, we did a license review and realized they had not applied for a new license since 2017, so they were shut down immediately. And they came in and applied for a license and that was denied based on the criminal history, the recent criminal, criminal history. And the, the license denial was just for 2019. As we sit here today, they still have not applied for a 2020 license. So it's still shut down. We would evaluate what they put in their license, because I know that they made some, some building improvements inside to meet with, with the code. So we, we would look at that if they actually applied. There's a chance that we would allow them to open, but then monitor them closely. But the, the bottom line is they have not applied for a new license. So a lot of good work in years past, and this was a long time ago, the, our special ops folks would do proactive work in there. It's, it's just not a healthy environment for officers to be working in. So it was a conscious decision on our part to, to not do proactive work in there to look for this, this kind of behavior. So, but we didn't have to, the, the complaint came to us. So we investigated the complaint and found that, that it was legitimate and took action. So. And they, there was a sign up, I don't know if it still is, but they were referring all their, their clients to their Parkland location. Just fine by me. And that was it, that's it for the, the fourth quarter. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I, I don't have any, really any questions as much as a comment, because I know, you know, we look at these numbers and the property numbers are great. And I'm looking at, at page six. And over the years, I've kind of gone back and looked and tracked and looked at WASP numbers or the UCR numbers. And I know sometimes there's different definitions when you go through the years. But, so like this year, we're, we're frustrated with 107 robberies, which is up significantly. But I looked and in 1998, we had 210 robberies. And it wasn't until, you know, as late as 2009, we had 171. So, and then like in burglaries, the peak year was 2000, we had 1,037. And last year we had 415. So we're down to just really 1.2 a day rather than three a day, right? And then things like motor vehicle theft, which is persistent problem, although it, it, last year was, was a good year on that front. You know, the peak year, 19, no, 2000, when there were 618. And most years it was always over 500 and last year it was, it was 315. So arson's, another one, arson was, 1998 was 37 and last year was nine. So we really have made a lot of, it's never what we would like, which is just always down every year. There's clearly reasons it goes up and down and it could be weather, it could be who just got caught recently, who did what. But, but I really do think that we do have to remember historically, we're on a very good path and that all the things we've done have really helped to, to get in, in, in the folks in, in our police department and, you know, working together on a lot of things that we've, and so hopefully we'll continue to make progress. But I just, I just, you know, when you see a number like a thousand and that number's less than half that now, you know, I hope that people realize that they're actually much safer in our city than they were 20 years ago certainly, but probably 15 years ago also.
Well, and I appreciate that and that's one of the things that, having worked in Lakewood since 1996, that's one of the things that, or excuse me, 1994, that's one of the things that I try and emphasize with people is you don't, having been here that long, it, I appreciate the changes that, that we've seen. And it's, you know, it, it's tough to explain, the numbers do tell a good story. You know, when, when you're throwing out, you know, over a thousand, you know, burglaries or whatever it was, that, that tells a big story. And if you do look at a graph from 1996 till now, it is, you know, a straight, almost a straight line down. We only look at a, you know, a couple of quarters and maybe a couple of years, but it's, that is a good historical perspective to have and it's a hard one for people to understand. And when you talk about people feeling safe, that feeling safe is, that's hard to achieve. If we could somehow go back in time and, and prevent the advent of social media, it'd be a lot easier. But that's not where we're at, so.
Is it possible to do a graph from as far back as you could go up to current time just for publicity?
Oh, absolutely.
I think that would be something that would be helpful to some, now that we have teen cops and that, that would be a record to show them.
Okay, that, that's a great idea. I know we have that, yes. The, no, there's not. Simply put, as far as a consensus, there is not. I, that's just a, that's a tough one. And it's different where, depending on the part of the state that you're in. I mean, if you look at, well, we have through Project Safe Neighborhoods, we've looked at Tacoma, us, and the neighboring districts of Pierce County and the, the gun crimes in just that area. And we are significantly higher. And that's, this includes not just shootings, but shots fired where nobody's hit and we collect shell casings and all that. We have, I think, a, a higher, Lakewood did, a higher rate of those than Seattle. And so, but when you even compare that to Eastern Washington, the, it's even more disparate. When you look at nationwide, at the different regions that were part of Project Safe Neighborhood, Lakewood, Tacoma, Pierce County were sixth, if you were assaulted, you were six times more likely to have that assault involve a firearm in, in this area than any other part of the country. Right, there's, sometimes there are. If you look at those three, the, at least the, the third one, well, the second one was, was not a firearm, at McCord Mart. But the third one, that person owned the firearm lawfully. He, there was no, nothing illegal about him having it. In the first one, I believe that at least one of, there was three guns in, in the car, I believe at least one was stolen. That's, it's just tough to find a law that would address, you know, gun crimes equitably throughout the state, because it's so different in every part of the state, even every county of the state. It is. Right, right.
Yeah, Chief. How many officers do you have that are working on regional teams or have an assignment that is primarily outside of Lakewood? Like, do we still have someone teaching up at the Law Enforcement Academy? And, and are, are those all, or which of those are projected to continue into, to, into 2020? Or maybe at your next quarterly report, a slide that sort of showed officers that are seconded to another.
I, I can answer that now. We have one officer that is teaching at the academy and that will, that was a three-year commitment. And that's, you know, obviously be here, I think last year was his first year, so two more years. And they're always looking for people, so even if that officer finishes his commitment, I don't think we would have a problem putting somebody else up there. And we get reimbursed for all the salary and benefits for that. The other task force is the Puget Sound Auto Theft Task Force, where we have both a sergeant and a detective. And, and salary and benefits are reimbursed for them as well. The, we also have three officers that are on or four investigators and detectives that are on part-time task forces, like Innocence Law, which is the FBI Task Force for Human Trafficking. We have two officers or two detectives that are assigned to that part-time. And then one that's assigned to the Marshal's Office part-time. And then one, well, he recently stepped away from the South Sound Gang Task Force. So we, now we have three, as of recently, we have three that are working part-time on other outside task forces and then the, the three that are full-time. Yes, so this was, I believe I showed the video here of the, the Fourth of July. And this was, it was a culmination of PSCAC's effort last year to evaluate the fireworks ordinance. I know that there was, usually on July, for the first meeting after the Fourth of July, or maybe on July 5th, you guys get a lot of phone calls from people who are unhappy with fireworks. But there was, you know, without making a, a decision based on the couple of people that called, there was a desire to have PSCAC look at it and see what, what the effectiveness would be of a ban. And I think what we found and what PSCAC found was that a, a ban would be almost unenforceable and ineffective. And the, the best example we could look at was Tacoma. They've had a ban, a full ban in place for years. And as the video saw, it was, it was Fourth of July there like it was everywhere else. And the, the difficulty with a full ban is the enforcement of it. And especially on, on the Fourth of July. That is, that is a hard day to go around and tell people, you know, you need to put your fireworks away or we take them and write a ticket. Meanwhile, you know, in a three-block radius, there's, you know, every other neighbor's shooting them off. So enforcement of that was, was very difficult. One, one potential, I don't want to say remedy, but one thing that might help some of the constituents that you all hear from is looking at the Third and Fifth and the, the allowance of fireworks on the Third and Fifth. That's something that I think would, I do think we have one of the more liberal fireworks ordinances that allow on the Third and Fifth. That would be something. That would be something that I think you could show your constituents that you were trying to, you know, make some changes to alleviate some of the hazards and the nuisance more than anything that's associated with fireworks, but still allow on the Fourth, for them on the Fourth of July. Keeping in mind that having a, even on the Third and Fifth, if you do elect to have a ban on those or restrict those dates, that's going to be years of enforcement before behaviors completely completely change. So it will take emphasis after emphasis for for a few years on those dates and a lot of education too, public messaging to get the word out that that they're they're no longer allowed on the Third and Fifth. So, and I do think part of that would be working with the fireworks stands that sell them. I don't know, you know, you could do that locally, there's the the tribal stands that people drive to that, they're out of our jurisdiction, that we would have a hard time, you know, getting an educational message out there. But that is something that would be worth considering, I think, as a council to help, I guess, show that you're, that we were doing something. And one of the things that we found is that it's, it is definitely more of a nuisance issue than a safety issue. The potential is certainly there for fires and injuries. And on the Fourth, the fire, the Fire Department saw a small increase, well, it was an increase in dumpster-type fires and small fires that they believe are fireworks-related. But for the rest of, you know, the the surrounding dates, there weren't a lot of big increases in fires or or injuries that they responded to. So really then it comes down to being a nuisance issue where it freaks out the dogs and the pets and people just don't like the noise or the mess that it leaves. They did. Looking at all three days, yeah, but there, yeah, if there was something that, as a group that you, you know, were driven to do, that that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, Chief, and I, I guess, but but just to make sure I understand is that the difficulties of enforcing it on the Fourth exist on the Third and the Fifth as well. And we have the constraint that if we were to decide to no longer allow them on the Third and the Fifth, that would be something that we could do now, but it would have to be effective in twenty twenty-one because of the way the state law doesn't allow us, ta 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 ta. You know, we got to have a year and a days before we can change our fireworks, do that.
And can I interrupt real quick? There is, I think, legislation that's active this year in Wash, in Olympia where it, if you do enact and it pertains only to fireworks, if you do enact a fireworks ban or any changes that that can go into effect immediately. That hasn't passed, but currently has a standard.
Yeah, I understand that the the bill is there again, it has been there before, it has never passed and it's not looking to do that. And and I'm, I'm, I'm really reluctant. I agree with the PSAC thing over there that says the the solution or the incremental change that we want to to have is going to be the the result of education and public information to try to do that. It's somewhat like smoking in that regard, to be able to go and do that. If we were to 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 just change and say, well, you can only do it on the Fourth and New Year's Eve, that we will still have issues of non-compliance and the folks who have complained to me have never had a complaint that says there's fireworks going off on the Third and the Fifth, they're, they would have the same complaint for fireworks going off on the Fourth. And we're not, you know, and so to to make a change so that we can tell somebody we did something, you know, I was talking to one of the council members in Stellacom, you know, and 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 they kind of did that a few years ago. And he said complaints kind of went down for about two years and now they're back at their 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 previous level, you know, about why isn't the ban being enforced and. Yeah, yeah, and 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 are going off. And so it's, it's more of an education problem than than putting something on the books that you that you can enforce because, you know, people will be, you can't manage expectations for what a ban will do. So, you know, I, I, so I kind of agree with the PSAC's recommendation that let's be more robust about the the negatives and the nuisance that 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 fireworks cause and get some percentage of people to moderate what they're doing with fireworks.
Does this impact the sale part of it? Because what, can they open now on the First of July and sell through the Fourth?
It would not.
It would not. So there was no.
That'd be separate.
There was no recommendation on the change on the on the sales?
No, correct.
Well, are you looking for us to bring something back at this point?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, you know, we're looking for some direction. Would you like us to, you know, continue with the enforcement that we have or would you like us to bring back an option or options to limit the discharge of fireworks just on July Fourth or something different?
Well, every meeting is public, so I, for for that. Nothing announced to. Right, their, the the best form that they have is they go back to their neighborhood associations and solicit feedback.
Absolutely, Deputy Mayor.
I think that would give a public opportunity to weigh in, to have a public hearing on it, if they choose to.
I agree. I'm interested in looking at limiting, limiting people's options for for enjoying their fireworks. And I think it's going to take more than public education to to change the behavior, particularly if if other cities are starting to do it more. It does become more of a thing, but I think we need to take some action, so.
Yes.
I have no objection to a public hearing, but I'll also play the devil's advocate. I don't think it's going to change anything. I think, I think PSAC is right. I think we leave things just as they are because I think that things are going to continue just as they are regardless of what we do. And I think all we need to do is say that. So I would, I would, a public hearing, sure, go ahead, but I think PSAC made the right recommendation. I think we leave it just the way it is.
Well, I, I've always been kind of a, you know, like I said, I had kids who loved them, so I never was, I, I, this, unfortunately, for the people who complain every year, it's just not a huge issue with me and and never has been. But I, but I get that there's frustration out there. And part of it is because so many of these fireworks are are not the ones that are sold here, right? And they're really loud and I don't know that it's going to do anything for them. I'm willing to, I'm willing to look at some kind of a reduction in the days. I don't know why we had the three-day, I guess I don't understand why we have a three-day and the First, the First of January, is that?
We do.
We do. And so, and we would still under this?
Yes.
So I, I guess I don't understand why we have the three-day period, but I would, I would still chime in that I'm still not as, I kind of just expected on the Fourth of July that it's going to be loud and raucous and, so I, you know, fine, I'm willing, willing to hear it, but I'm not, I'm, I'm not ready to support any change, but if if that's the the will of the body, I'll, I can live with it.
Okay, so what I hear is consensus to put this on a future regular meeting where we can have a public hearing. I would suggest we do it after the legislative sixty days is up to see if they've taken any action whatsoever. And then that can be part of the presentation in advance of the public hearing. I think it would be helpful as part of the public hearing to have the mini presentation about what PSAC has done, actually play the video for those members of the public who may not have had the chance to see it. And that would help inform them on the enforceability challenges. Yeah, it's a good video and I think it would be helpful, but I, I think we've heard enough over the years that people are concerned and this is one of those issues where they feel that they, they don't want to talk to the wall and get no action. So I think at least giving them their day and having a public hearing, assuming that it's broadly disseminated for those who really are interested in coming, that they can come and chat with us about it, so. Yeah, you know, I personally would not be one, I've always been the military guy, the sounds of freedom sort of thing. Fourth of July is what it is, but I'd, I'd be fine looking at something restricting it to the Fourth and the First and doing away with the Third and the Fifth, but that's just me. All right, great.
Thank you all.
Okay, next, we're going to look at information technology, the strategic plan update with Mr. White. Thanks, Chief.
Evening Deputy Mayor and council members. So I'll just kind of run through briefly on some of the 2019 projects and then feel free to stop me if there's any questions on on some of those. So as you can see on the first one, we continue to roll out cameras. Those are mostly in areas where we either have police activity or we've been requested. Otherwise, most of the facilities that we've done are complete, so that project is kind of an ongoing, um, as-needed basis if there's a need to do cameras. So we've roughly got ninety-nine out there. We still got the three public facing that are coming up on the website, so there's any questions about that. We haven't added those yet just for some security issues, but those should be coming up here shortly, so those will be available to the public. And those are only in places like Fort Silken Park, the playground area, the ballfields, and then eventually we'll have the boat launch in Harry Todd as well. Go ahead.
Police station forty-four cameras, is that actually forty-four cameras at that building or is that with, within the department?
So it's forty-four cameras that are at the location. It's a mixture of the building, the outside, the impound yard, but there is a total of forty-four that are there. And the reason that is, is that when those cameras initially went up, there was some concern from officers about not being able to see some of the corners of the building. So if somebody was kind of crouched down in a corner, there was not a clear view of that if something were to happen. So we made sure that as we put cameras on the roof, that we also covered kind of the memorial and then all of those nooks and crannies around the building. But there are several cameras that also cover the impound yard and then the cameras that are inside the station themselves. And most of those cameras are evidence rooms, drug and weapons rooms, the lower portion of the police station, and then one in the lobby. So outside of the, the main floor, there's only a single camera which is in the lobby, but it is a total of forty-four that are there.
At the police station, we have one posted sign that is, said that this is a public place where you can, it's like a meetup place if you sell something on the internet to do that. And it's there and, and, you know, that's because that's there and that's covered by a camera and 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 do that to be able to go in and out and do that. Do we have any other such sites anywhere or where, have we installed any cameras of where we might publicize another location as such a site?
At the moment, the only authorized public area, so to speak, is the offer-up lot that's at the station. I think most cities do it around the police station just for what it is, but we don't have anything else out there. We have multiple cameras that actually look at that. It's not only used for kind of an offer-up scenario, but it's also used for children's swaps for divorced parents that are passing kids. So we've got cameras that are kind of looking at that whole parking lot just to make sure. And there's been some instances there that we've been able to catch, but generally speaking, those are the only areas that we have cameras that are specifically looking at the public coming in and either doing an offer-up swap, a crackless sale, or kind of a children's swap.
So on on sites like, is that like for the the children visitation sites and the stuff to there? We have any different retention period on the the images there than than we do for like the images in City Hall or?
No, generally speaking, the retention is set. The only change to that would be if there was a crime or something committed there and then those videos would be stored off to evidence based off what the type of crime was. But there's, there's no other retention that's specific just because you have an offer-up lot.
So what is the retention then, systemically?
Um, so we're keeping our cameras for thirty days and so that gives us a good timeframe. If there is something that occurs, then we get notified by the police or a public records request and then we can provide that. Typically, that notification happens pretty quick, especially if there's some sort of crime or an incident that's happened. But generally, it's thirty days for us. Now, that's separate than any other camera systems that we have, but just, just for the videos, for this one, it's thirty days.
Great, next, done.
Okay. So the next couple are are just areas that we have focused on for computer replacements. So we did a server upgrade over at the police station that brought us up to have our secondary co-location. The computer replacement project still continues. Last year, we we used most of those dollars and we're very thankful that council and executive leadership gave us those monies. We continue to focus on replacement of police officer laptops and then desktops throughout the city. And we still use the focuses, not replacing unless we really need to. So there's a lot of desktops that we just feel that we don't need to spend the money on, so we focus in areas that we do and then we save those dollars in other areas. The vulnerability in pen testing, this is one that we did last year. I briefly mentioned this in the last meeting, we were very successful with that. We did reach out to the National Guard at the time and ask them to assist us. Unfortunately, due to their workload and cyber warfare and everything else that's going on, they were pretty busy, although we do continue to plan on reaching out to them, especially in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one and seeing if there's a need. I think it's good training for their staff to be able to do and it's good for us to actually have, be next to the JBL and have that opportunity to work with them. So we'll continue to focus on cybersecurity and infrastructure and utilize the resources that we have, especially over at JBLM. So the next one is the police in-car video system. We generally expect that to be complete and I'll talk about that in twenty twenty, but we rolled out twenty-eight in-car videos in twenty nineteen along with two body worn cameras. The next one is the storage area network. That was the data store that needed to be installed at the station so that the city had its secondary, which is now our primary, data center, so that one went well.
So that's, that's now the primary?
So we, yes, we did. We flipped the police station as the primary and so now City Hall is the secondary to that. So that storage allowed us to do that along with the server upgrades and one of the previous ones there.
Do we do a cloud backup too in addition to the hard servers?
So we are backing some stuff up to Vegas right now and then we also replicate between City Hall and the station throughout the day. And then I'll talk briefly when we get to the next one, kind of what our next thoughts are, but yeah, we do some cloud, but we also replicate to our own cloud.
Okay.
It saves us money by doing that. Cybersecurity awareness, again, our focus in twenty nineteen and moving forward, we'll definitely be with security and and cybersecurity is a huge one, so we rolled out the NOVA four training program for the staff that's gone well. We're getting ready to roll out a couple more scenarios for them, so we'll have some more updates for you in the next one. But we continue to focus on education, 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 because that's where the breaches will come in. One mistake there. Twenty nineteen carried into twenty twenty. The first one has just been kind of a nightmare for us. We can still are working on the redundant data circuits and that's to bring in an additional internet gateway to the police station. We've had nothing but trouble with CenturyLink and Verizon and it's typically around permits for the polls and those are typically due to Tacoma and actually all Tacoma at this point. So we're still working on doing that one, that'll bring us the data into the station. The cloud-enabled backup storage, those are a couple of solutions that we purchased. We're still implementing some of those, but we are backing up to some Vegas sites right now. The multi-drive tape solution, we're carrying that one over, that will be for our solution, which I'll talk about in a minute shortly, which will be down most likely in Hillsborough. The twenty twenty projects, the first one, the broadcast streaming council meetings, that is for this session here and regular meetings. We still yet to see YouTube eliminate the free service, so we're still benefiting by allowing our council meetings and any other session that we do to stream to YouTube, although we carry that funding. Although we carry that funding over just in case, I'm sure at some point YouTube will will ask for money, but they haven't so far, so knock on wood on there. Website enhancements, the communications manager Bren still continues to work on those, and so those are just enhancements that we're working on throughout the year. Latest ones, bringing in some additional stuff for courts and for parks and more online services. So we partner with a third party to help us develop those and implement those online, so you'll see more stuff coming on that one. The disaster recovery and business continuity is a carryover. We can actually finish everything for that until we get the all the co-locations up and running and the DRs in place and additional redundant circuits. So once that's done, we'll jump right into the DR plan and business continuity side. The citywide camera system is kind of a piggyback of the first twenty nineteen one I was just talking about for additional cameras. And right now, that's kind of an as-needed basis. I think we have enough out there. Where our focus now is if there's areas where either police or someone's coming forward saying we need more accessibility to those areas, we roll those out. And the latest ones were down at the the drive up through the garage when they're bringing people in from the squally or Pierce County jail. So we we do it on as-needed basis. Computer replacement continues, so we're still focusing on rolling out the new stations for police. We should be finishing that up hopefully this year and then start rolling into the desktops. So that's just an ongoing project, and we're very thankful that council gave us that hundred and thirty thousand each year to do that. The document management system, that one, we're hoping that that's going to be picked up in the second quarter. Although it's a long-term project, so we don't see that ending until twenty twenty-one. And right now, that's kind of piggybacking on the PALS project, which I'll talk about shortly. Policing car video system, there is another twenty cars right now that are in play for that. And that should complete the in-car co-band solution for police cars. My understanding is that that'll happen throughout this year, and then the only replacements will be any new additional cars that come or if there's a system that goes bad and we have to replace, but for now, that should complete that actual rollout. So the new permitting system, so everyone's aware that the city made a decision to move to the PALS system. And so we've been working with community economic development, finance, and Pierce County and executive leadership on rolling that project out. It's definitely a larger project of some of the ones that we're doing right now. I will tell you that it's in queue. All of IT's projects are complete. We are now waiting for them to do a few things on their end to kind of give us that first opportunity to look at the cloud and get into their system. They're still entering data, so there's still some work that's continuing, but most of what's required from Lakewood side has been completed. And we're just waiting now for the Pierce County side to kind of come on board a little bit faster. So the the initial rollout of that was estimated in kind of the second quarter, but we're hoping that we can get things done here quickly. So there's definitely a pilot phase and a testing phase that needs to occur before that solution can get rolled out in order for that to be successful. So you'll see a lot of work going around the PALS project from multiple departments to ensure the success of that. The next one is the fiber to O and M. I'm happy to say that that should be completed by end of this week. And once that happens, the O and M facility will be the last major facility for Lakewood that is now interconnected through fiber. And that'll also bring on an additional nine cameras that have already been staged and installed there. So once that's online, we'll roll those cameras. I'm expecting that to be done by Friday. So security enhancements, this is really us looking at kind of the security and infrastructure of the city and wherever we feel that we need to add additional enhancements to protect the city and its data and infrastructure, and that's where we focus. So this additional dollars carried over definitely will be used for different projects and different solutions that we see out there. The world changes constantly with cybersecurity, which actually is the next conversation. And I have to say, I want to thank council for actually blessing us with the funds to continue down the road of cybersecurity. As you're aware, there have been numerous cities out there that have had what they consider minor instances that has ended up costing them millions of dollars to recover from. I saw yesterday that Port Angeles Finance Director actually started last week. Email accounts were hacked, and so emails are still going out on behalf of that. Yeah, yeah, there's.
To do what?
Oh, that was, no, that was up in up north. I think Belingham was one, but there there was.
What did they have to pay? Some ransom thing or what?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that happens all the time. Yeah, so really, our our focus has really been on cybersecurity. And again, thank you very much for really allowing us to focus on that and the approval from city council for the funding and then also from the executive leadership has just been huge for us. That's going to be something that we continue to focus on in twenty twenty. The threats are constantly changing. We're constantly having to stay kind of in the forefront on this. And knock on wood, you know, we have not had an intrusion. You saw my emails several weeks back about we were sending out notifying staff of potential. We saw a lot of Iranian activities, kind of when the Iran thing started up. Again, and we saw it here at Lakewood. We saw a lot of potential inbound attacks coming from that area of the world, which was a greater, larger increase than what we've seen in the past, and it's because of the the measures that we put in place, the firewalls, the infrastructure, and really focus on cybersecurity that we didn't have a penetration. So since I've been here, there's been no penetration, and even before that, though, I'm aware of, it's been pretty good. But definitely moving through twenty twenty, that will be the focus for IT, and you see that in most of the cities out there. The next one is security training. Again, thank you for the follow-up on that one as well. Those funds will be used really focusing on cybersecurity and infrastructure moving forward for the IT staff. The Cradle Point project, that brings Wi-Fi to the vehicles. Couple of years ago, we had brought to council some of the issues we were having with cell phones and disconnects and connectivity issues in the car. I will say that with the Cradle Point, we've had nothing but positive results for police officers. And it's not just police officers. We also focus on inspectors and any mobile staff and vehicles that we have. So really, it's kind of changing how we used to do things with cell phones and really lighting up the vehicles. The next thing that we're doing now is looking at command staff vehicles and enabling Wi-Fi. So that way, if if we do joint ventures with other agencies, our vehicles will be Wi-Fi hotspots and allow other agencies to have Wi-Fi in the field as well. So something that you generally don't see out there, but I think it's a good thing for us, and especially if there's an incident, we have a lot of command vehicles. We can build a a large wireless network around those vehicles. And you'll see that as well when it comes to UAS and drone operations. We can now expand the use of drones. Have a really focus on kind of that Wi-Fi, because that's what you use when you're doing first-person viewing or any of the real-time data coming back to officers.
Just just a point on that. I was, we rented a car this weekend. We were in Phoenix for the event. It's a Chevy Malibu, and it had Wi-Fi on the screen that you could press a little button. And it had Wi-Fi and it gave you the login and password or whatever for the Wi-Fi for that, and it allowed the kids to work on their laptop in the car. So it may be a thought as we go forward and rotate out police vehicles that that's a component or, I mean, that people look to make sure as part of the package we purchase.
I can tell you that right now, all of our police cars have Cradle Point or are getting Cradle Point. It has been a number one priority for us on the communications side to ensure that those vehicles are wired. And so we have already gone down that road, the last twenty that are. So basically, what happens when a police car is ordered and we're instructed that they're getting co-band, we also throw in Cradle Point at that time. It eliminates the the additional cost to have to do that and makes it kind of a one-stop shop. They'll do the co-band in car video, all the lights and sirens and radios, and then we throw a Cradle Point in at the exact same time. So you'll see at the end of this year that every vehicle will have Cradle Point. The next one will be the inspector vehicles that go out because they also use cell phones, and the challenge with that is laptops are in the car, cell phones leave, they get disconnected. There's frustration about being able to connect back remotely, and so Cradle Point will fix that for them too.
Yeah, it's amazing. New technologies that advances, but it's the first time I'd seen that in a rental car.
So Cradle Point is basically the the business version of what you saw in the vehicles. So and you see most police cars driving around other agencies, it looks like a little shark fan antenna on the back. Those are typical radio slash Cradle Point slash other types of interesting communications. So the next one is the AT&T FirstNet. So what we had done is we went and looked at our Verizon bills. We looked at the costs that we were spending on that. We partnered with the police for emergency operations and kind of that. Looked at the disaster scenario and and what the FirstNet solution offers. The first thing that we saw was a migration to AT&T dropped our monthly cost for Verizon. So we saved roughly fifteen hundred to two thousand dollars a month by moving to AT&T. The second thing that we got from that were all the benefits of this first responder network using AT&T's nine-one-one services and just really priority of service for not only for police, but for also for executive staff and leadership teams within the city. Biggest one being just kind of that initial cost, that the cost savings that we were able to get, and then from there, we're just rolling out additional enhancements and services. Day-to-day operations, most people don't know they're on FirstNet, but one thing that we also did was we replaced all the cell phones throughout the city. We got iPhones for ninety-nine cents a piece, so everybody who had an older phone, I think you guys all have the new iPhones. So everybody is now on the same platform, which is ease of support and maintenance for technology staff and also for the station. We utilize one staff member over there as well to help us with cell phones because there's so many at the station. But now it's a single platform across the board, very easy for us to support with our evidence systems and cell phones, communications, Cradle Point, Wi-Fi, one set of documents, one set of training, and we're good to go. The exception to that rule is the command staff at the police station also have a Verizon card. And the reason that is, is that if there ever is an issue with AT&T, because not everything is foolproof, the command staff and certain leadership members will have a Verizon backup as well. So wherever they go, they'll have dual access, so that's something that's new for us, whereas in the past, we just had a single provider. Ninety-nine cents. Ninety-nine cents. So don't lose that phone, because we have to give you another one. Then well, that's now we're cranking into Burger King Whopper prices. Don't lose that phone. Yes, ninety-nine cents. It was ninety-nine dollars to do Galaxy phones, and so we chose to do the ninety-nine cent route. Made sense. And they're very comparable these days, so. Yeah, yeah. Yes. The next one is, I really, I I briefly talked about this one. This is just bringing internet access to the police station. Really, it's for that secondary redundancy that we need in case city hall goes down. It also establishes a secondary path to Southside nine-one-one, so that way there's never an outage for any first responders. The next one is the disaster recovery and business continuity project. This is one that we're looking at to do a third co-location, and the reason we're doing that is to look at the hundred-mile-plus scenario. So if you're familiar with business continuity, it's always recommended to be a hundred, hundred-and-fifty miles away from your central office. And in our case, we're five minutes up the road. The next step that we're looking at is to bring in a site that's located down in Hillsborough. Hillsborough is a location that is seismic-proof, they say, but this is a level four data center. The only one higher than this is the DOD and military, which is level five. So this solution that we're looking at is redundant, I mean, it's redundant drainage and gutters and water and everything. So our hope is to bring a solution down there, and then we'll be replicating kind of a triangle scenario. So we'll replicate from here to the station, station to here, here to Hillsborough, and station to Hillsborough. So in the event that city hall were to go down or the police station were to go down, we would issue out ELC laptops. And anybody who has remote laptops or even iPads could actually remote into the city services out of Hillsborough and still have access to everything, providing that Southside nine-one-one had a backup connection at their end. But we would continue to function even if it was through a remote connection. So that kind of gets us above and beyond what you see other cities doing. So. The wide format printer and scanner, we talked about that the last time. Thank you for allowing us to do that. Those systems have been installed and they're very nice. So we've cut our printing down to roughly six to ten seconds versus six to ten minutes, and the scanner will should be up next week, and we'll complete that project as well. Nope, we should be done next week, but we'll be a little early. February thirtieth? Oh, yeah, sorry. My bad. I got you. It's an extra day. Yeah, we're using the Mayan calendar. So then twenty twenty-one projects again are just kind of focused on what we've been doing. So Wi-Fi access point, it's really focusing on extended cameras, computer replacement, server, business continuity, and again, cybersecurity will be kind of the main focus. And then other projects that come up will be lingering the PALS project, the document manager project will go into the twenty twenty-one timeframe as well. And then we'll update our six-year plan with some new projects and ideas on there. So those numbers are still kind of coming forward from the county. Our first estimate was right around that. We were told by the county that they're not into making money, so we're not sure what that means. But yeah, it's about a fifty thousand dollar M and O on the permit side. We don't have the final number as of yet. The project's still going. Yes. And there's a lot of efficiencies for us to be tied into Pierce County solution. I mean, there's direct integration into the assessor's office. There's direct integration into taxes and fees and and everything else. Exactly. We're going to be able to tie into their GIS system and then also bring our GIS system on board, so we'll have more maps and overlays that they can do. But there's a huge benefit of doing that with the county. It also, there's lots of efficiencies in community economic development and the permit side that they get from that. But it is a huge project. There's a lot of changes that we're doing on our end to make sure there are. It's not just rolling out new software. There's lots of training and there's efficiencies and there's methodologies on how we do things and what we're charging. So all of that's being looked at. I think it'll be a very, very nice system and robust for the staff. And definitely, it's much cheaper than if we were to go out and look at purchasing one and starting, you know, from scratch, so. Yeah, so if you're asking about generally all the projects we're working on, so most of the projects that, yeah, most of the projects that we do, we always build in some costs to allow us to have third-party support, whether it's vendors. We have a very good vendor that's out of Hillsborough that does a lot of things for us that they don't charge. I've known them for twenty years. I've kind of worked with them in different areas, and when I came on board here, I brought them because I knew that we could do things at no cost and trying to keep things inexpensive, not cheap, but just inexpensive, they're a huge benefit for us, so we do utilize third-party for that. The county projects, one of the benefits that we get there is that we don't have developers. The county does. It's their system. It's been around for, I don't know, twenty-some-odd years, I think. So we're benefiting from their staff doing that, but we've got dedicated people in the city that have specific key parts to this. And so those people are focused on ensuring the success of the PALS implementation. IT's portion of that is to ensure that the systems are up and running, connectivity works, and data can go in. Beyond that, you've got finance looking at dollars, community economic development and whatnot. So yeah, there are various other people that are involved in all of these projects. Our staff are very busy, but in any types of new projects that we bring on board, we always look at what is it that we need to bring on and other expertise? But most of the time, we try to do it ourselves, but in these instances, definitely, we're bringing others in. Otherwise, we'd be asking for additional staff, and we don't want to go down that route.
Well, thank you. Looks like you're using our money wisely, so we appreciate it.
No problem. All right, good evening.
Great. Now we're going to go review the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. I think we've got Mr. Viewer and Ms. Spear for that.
Thank you and good evening, members of the council. Deputy Mayor Tiffany Spear, Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager. So we've talked about subarea plans now for a while, and we've switched gears this evening from the downtown area to what's being called Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. And this begins in your packet for this evening on page thirty-six and goes through the conclusion of your packet, I believe. But I'll be working off of a PowerPoint that has some similarities to what's there in the packet, but I'll also make references to things that aren't included in the PowerPoint. So this, like the downtown subarea plan, is intended to have not only a subarea plan itself, which is the policy-level document similar to your comprehensive plan, but for a specific sub-area of the city, but also a hybrid form-based code, so it'll have its own chapter in the Lakewood Municipal Code like downtown does. And also, it'll have the CIPA-based planned action, meaning the city will do ahead of time the CIPA analysis for the entire subarea, assuming a certain type and intensity of build-out, and then once a specific project comes into the area. And then once a specific project comes into the area, if what they are suggesting falls within the parameters that were already analyzed, they won't have to do SEPA again. So this is another attempt at not only planning ahead for some additional densification and updating development patterns in this area of the city, but also saving time and money for both sides of the table when specific projects were to come in going forward. The Lakewood View Neighborhood or the Lakewood Station District has been included in the comprehensive plan since incorporation. There's information and actually a policy-level vision map that I'll show you in just a second, but that's in the comprehensive plan as it sits now. And then there's a couple of land use and urban design policies that specifically call for a subarea plan in this area of the city. And then the twenty-eighteen to twenty strategic plan that the council adopted recently also continues to advocate and support affordable and mixed-income housing and maximizing public transit. And then I believe you've already heard at least once from the economic development staff about the Lakewood Landing Project, which is along I-5. It's currently in part occupied by WashDOT, but that's hopefully changing within the near future, and this could turn into a next major redevelopment area for Lakewood. So last November, the Department of Commerce awarded the city grants, and that is for the creation of the subarea plan, the planned action, and the hybrid form-based code. We are in the very beginning stages, and actually, a week from tonight, it'll be in front of council to approve the contract for the consultant who will be doing the lead on this work. Their work and our work as staff would be completed by next April, and council is tentatively scheduled to take action by April one of twenty-twenty-one. But there are obviously a number of things that need to happen between now and then. We're going to start outreach to stakeholders, meaning property owners, business owners, neighborhood associations, other cultural representatives, to make sure we get a good cross-section of people and interests within this subarea together, starting February twenty-eighth, so just a couple of weeks from now. And the intent there is to just introduce the fact that this is coming. It's a relatively quick schedule compared to downtown, for instance. This one is, we're in February of twenty-twenty, and we're talking about completion by next April. So we're going to get going and rely on the fact that the process was recently done with downtown, so it won't be completely new to those on the internal side. But we certainly need to outreach to the area and let them know what's happening. So I'll walk a little bit more through some of the information and content that is intended for the plan. But there's also several options of the actual boundaries for this subarea for council feedback this evening. So this is the current map that's within the city's comprehensive plan. And as I mentioned, it's not really specific, it's just showing you concepts and ideas. But what you see there is the general outline. So one-hundred-and-eight Streets on the north, Pacific and I-5 are included. Bridgeport Way is the boundary on the west. And then this version goes below I-5 down into some of the Springbrook area. You see the idea of preserving oak woodlands, including small plaza parks, also linear parks or a green zone along I-5, improving pedestrian connections between the Sounder Station now and then neighborhoods around it or businesses around it. And so the idea was to try to bring a whole lot of different types of uses and accesses into the area. Here are some of the things that are included in the comprehensive plan anticipating what this subarea would be performing like. A new high-density employment and residential district catalyzed by stationary development opportunities. Significant high-density multi-unit residential presence will be encouraged. A multimodal commuter hub of Lakewood, mixture, excuse me, of intensive land uses and activities supportive of direct regional access via the commuter rail and I-5 itself. I mentioned already Lakewood Landing, but this is just an aerial photo of where that is located. I'm sorry, this pointer doesn't work on that screen, but what you'll see, there is I-5 as the diagonal through the center of the screen and just below the parcel that's highlighted. But that is about a thirty-acre site. It's in the south-central area of what's being proposed for this subarea. And as it stands right now, WashDOT is working closely with the city in terms of potentially relocating. And then there's some initial work being done on what type of project, what type of multi-use development could happen most beneficially to the city on this property. So on the left-hand side, you'll see option one that's included in your memo regarding the boundaries. The blue is the same as what you saw in this map. These are the same boundaries, so again, one hundred-and-eighth, Bridgeport on the west, down to one-hundred-and-twenty-third in Springbrook, and then I-5. The one on the right is the second proposal, and this is actually one that the department would recommend. It obviously moves off and it adds some property to the northeast. So extending beyond where it stopped with the one-hundred-and-eighth, up to now adding properties up to five-twelve interchange. And the idea there is to add property that could potentially be added to the Lakewood Landing Project, as well as incorporating the park and ride and some of the other businesses along Pacific and South Tacoma Way that head up to the five-twelve boundary. And then the other thing that's suggested on this version is down at the bottom, you'll see Springbrook has actually been removed. Obviously, there's a number of different conversations going on around the Springbrook area right now. There's the pending outcome of the floodplain analysis that was begun last year, which is almost done. But there's also the discussion and the interest by council in eighteen and nineteen, I believe, and now continuing into twenty to potentially rezone Springbrook regardless of what goes on with the subarea plan. So the thought here is to incorporate more of the area up to five-twelve and then take Springbrook out of it. This still incorporates Lakewood Landing, and it still continues to have the connection through transit to the downtown. This is an aerial view of that same boundary. You'll see, if you can, I don't know how visual this is for you, it's in your packet as well. But there's a number of types of uses. St. Clair Hospital is along Bridgeport, and then you get down into the Pacific Highway redevelopment area, and again, up to five-twelve. You do see a little bit of residential, but there's a potential for some densification and some changes in land use to allow more multifamily types of housing as we move forward with this plan. Taking a hundred-thousand-foot level now, this is the entire city. And just for reference sake, the hatchmarks there is where that option two would be located and the types of zones that are included within it. It's a variety of commercial and then public institutional with St. Clair, and then a little bit of residential, as I mentioned. It is bisecting some of the neighborhood commercial along Bridgeport, that bright pink. It's got, excuse me, what's it called? Transit-oriented commercial? Yes, sorry. That's the lighter red, that's where the transit station is currently located. And then you see a little bit of bright green that right now is an open space zoned parcel. But the idea here was that, like you saw with that earlier map, you would have either plazas or linear parks and other parts of this subarea once it gets further developed. Little closer up, and again, you see those different zones. There you go, the list of the various zones that are within the current area. So transit-oriented commercial, commercial two, neighborhood commercial two, commercial one, multifamily three, public institutional, and then that weird open space that would change. So if you start to look at some of the benefits to taking action on this subarea, part of it is the economic development opportunities with Lakewood Landing, but it's also dealing with the ongoing need for Lakewood to be planning for its growth. And again, I know the council has heard this in various messages before, but as it stands, Lakewood's twenty-thirty population target is seventy-two thousand. Right now, we're roughly at sixty thousand, maybe a little bit over. And so if you were to compare the population between two thousand and ten and two thousand and eighteen, the rate of growth was about five percent. If you go between now and twenty-thirty to that seventy-two thousand, that's a sixteen percent rate of growth, which is obviously significantly more. Whether or not that will realistically happen is one question. But the other question is, assuming that target stands, how is Lakewood going to get to it? And so the idea here with this subarea plan is maybe, in addition to that densification plan for in downtown, there can be some more of that in the Lakewood Station area, given its proximity to the transit opportunities there. What you see on the bottom on the left are the densities and assumed capacity under the most recent Buildable Lands Report. So this is on paper, this is in theory, what the county assumes in terms of density for each of the city's zones. And so if you look, this might be more visible to you. Sorry, on page... Maybe not. Okay. Sorry, I can get this to you if you need it. The assumed density is the second column in white in the blue. So you'll see, for instance, R-dash-one is the first row, and the assumed density there is one-point-four-five units per acre. If you jump over to the green chart, that is the information that staff compiled last year in terms of actual density. And so the assumed density of R-one is one-point-four-five. R-three, if you jump down there, it's four-point-eight units per acre. If you jump over to the green, you'll see it's not at four-point-eight in terms of actual density, it's at three-point-three-one. And so just very rough, high-level math, that's about a sixty-nine percent usage of the maximum density within the R-three zone, and that's citywide. Going down into some of the other ones, you'll see as far down into multifamily two and three, the density there actual is only about a third of what is potential within that based on theory and development regulations. So all of that to say, there's room within the current city's zones and the current city's zoning to absorb a significant amount of additional growth. But what may happen through the subarea plan is a thought to rezone something. So it may be a commercial zone now, maybe it changes to a multifamily zone, or maybe it's the gradation between the different types of densities within residential zones. Or it's simply taking a look at what is currently zoned and why hasn't it maximized its development? And what can be done to incentivize that without rezoning anything? So again, there's shades of gray here in the planning, but the idea is, let's use this subarea of the city as another place to absorb some of the growth that needs to happen within the next couple of decades. This is a third option that's, at this point, very nebulous, but it is one where we would take the boundary along Bridgeport and extend it further west into some of the existing residential neighborhoods. There is a long history of this subarea being planned for along Bridgeport Way as being the logical boundary, in part because of the uses and the natural separation you have with Bridgeport Way. But this would be a way, if the city were to desire to do this and wanted to go ahead and redraw the boundaries, you could add some additional residential areas and maybe densify those as well.
A lot of those, I mean, does that make a lot of sense to do? Because a lot of those lots are tiny anyway.
Our recommendation is not this option. Our recommendation is option two. But we did want to throw it in front of you just for food for thought. One of the things, too, about this part of the city, I'll back up just to the big map, is obviously, the lakes are on the left-hand side, the western side of the city. The eastern side does not have that. And so you have, just from an environmental standpoint, the ability to densify further on the east side of the city than you do on the west. So this is a chance, again, to incorporate some additional types of housing, maybe some of that missing middle, some other opportunities for townhouses and condominiums, not only apartments, especially since state law has changed to ease up that type of construction, and hopefully, we'll be seeing more of it. So quickly, the other pieces to this whole package are the planned action SEPA, which I mentioned. And there's some significant savings to the developers, as well as time. So up to a year, if there's an EIS involved for a project, the environmental impact statement, up to a hundred thousand it can be for a cost of one of those. And then, of course, when you're actually just wanting to move ahead with a project and you don't have to do SEPA, that's a big deal. And then the hybrid form-based code, similar to what happened with the downtown code, it's going to be, rather than this type of zone equals this type of use, and you're only allowed to do these types of things within your building, it almost flips that on its head and says, this type of a road, arterial or corridor or residential, whatever it is, these are what the buildings need to look like. This is where the parking needs to be located, this is the type of pedestrian access we want. And then, other than that, developer, it's up to you, and you have much more creativity in terms of what's going to be allowed there. So the questions that would need to be asked under a hybrid form-based code would be, is what someone is wanting consistent, first of all, with the city's comprehensive plan? Is it consistent with the visions and objectives of the subarea? Does it comply with any of those standards I just mentioned, based on the type of road and the layout that would be required for the building on the lot? And then, does it comply with the SEPA planned action? Those are the four questions. So a much more streamlined review process once a project actually comes in. So where we sit once again is there's those three options regarding the boundaries. There's a retreat coming up for stakeholders that will be held on February twenty-eighth here at City Hall. And I'm happy to send an invitation to council members, anybody who wants to come. And then, next Monday night, the council will be presumably taking action on the contract for our consultant to get going and moving ahead. So other than that, I am open for questions.
Just a quick question to throw it out there. So assume, well, we're going to go forward to the consultant. What if the consultant comes back and says, geez, here's an option four you haven't considered?
I think what we're going to have to do is go back and talk to the stakeholders first and foremost on the twenty-eighth and say, here's options, are there any strong objections or interest to change this? That first option is the one that's been in the comprehensive plan for twenty years now. We'll see if they buy it on that second one. And then, secondly, if the consultant comes back with that, we'll just have to see if there's resistance or interest in that and kind of defer. I think buy-in of the residents and the business owners is going to be primary in getting this thing to go, especially since we're going on such a fast pace.
Well, thanks. And I think having worked through the downtown plan, we've got a better feel for the advantages that this can happen and how the project will work and the important role that a consultant will actually play in gathering everything together. And I also appreciate that this is a far more robust conversation that we've had about the boundaries than we did when we started the downtown plan. Because the downtown plan, we sort of got to a point of where we were quite a ways into it, and council looked at the boundaries and had thoughts about, well, let's move it over here and let's move over there. And quite honestly, we got into that too late, because we were sort of told things have moved down the road a bit and certain things, and people have been notified and milestones have passed. And so you can't, even if you, council thought it was a good idea, you couldn't really make any adjustments by a few blocks or things to do that. So I appreciate the fact that we're getting a chance to do things early, and then perhaps we can tell the consultant that if they've got anything that we would like them to bring it to us sooner or later if they think that there's something different than what we initially decide to tell them to move forward with. Staff is recommending option two, and I'm generally in favor of that. And I'm looking at page seven of our packet. The only adjustment that I would like to make from this and that we should consider is when we did the downtown subarea plan and we talked about Gravity Lake Drive, and one of the things was, we wanted to make sure that we had sort of the same standards on both sides of the street in the commercial area, so that we didn't have, like, standards all on one side and the other side. It was still in the neighborhood commercial zoning situation. And I'd like to apply that same to Bridgeport. You know, from one-hundred-and-eighth down to opposite St. Clair, there is there is some neighborhood commercial zoning and arterial arc zoning that's sort of like a parcel deep on that side of the road and have the subarea include where both sides of the road are currently commercial zoning. Put both sides of the road into the thing so that we get identical design standards for new development on both sides of the street there. And I think about that space, I think that there's one obvious property that needs to get developed into something that's been there forever on the corner of one-hundred-and-eighth and Bridgeport. Where, there must have been something there, but it was there before I moved to this town. Again, it looked like it might have been a restaurant or something, but whatever was there. And other than trying to keep the trash out of it, it hasn't gone anywhere in some of... So that would just be the slight adjustment that I would make to option 2. For, it's about, it's about four blocks of commercial property that's on the west side of the street that we just add into option 2 of the plan that I think would, down the road is developed for those things to do that.
That's a good idea. What about, because if that's going to be a corridor into the city, it does make some sense to have it, the consistent look coming in on both sides, because otherwise you've got Nirvana on one side and something less than Nirvana on the other side.
Sure, yeah. We can make that adjustment and take that to the retreat on the 28th.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's almost sort of like an option 2.5.
Why wouldn't you plan for it the whole length of that from 108th all the way down to I-5?
Exactly.
If you're going to do it, you might as well do it all the way down. I think it makes good sense to go up to 512 for all the reasons you articulated. Yeah, I think it makes good sense because then you've got the whole wave lining thing, the whole look feel coming into the city off of that exit. Yeah. We can only hope that one of these plans actually spurs development.
Knocking on wood, knocking...
Knock on plastic.
Whatever this is, yeah. All right, so what I just heard from council, I believe, is that we would go with option 2 with the expansion of basically one parcel deep or one zone deep on the west side of Bridgeport. Okay.
I think we're talking 108th down to the freeway.
Yeah. You run into a section where some of those folks are not, don't face Bridgeport, and so they're sidewalks.
Is that 114th where the zoning changes? Okay.
Anything, Dave?
Anyway, whatever the appropriate thing is there. Certainly, my thought is there's also some commercial zoning on the other side of the railroad track going all the way down to I-5.
Maestro with his man, he can't see what he has to say here.
What I've heard was basically go from 108th, right, we would include these commercial properties at the bridge portway.
Yep, for sure.
All the way down to basically 111, 112. You pick up this commercial area right here.
Yeah.
And then, we would not touch the single-family residential since most of these back up against the street anyway. And there's a little bit of residual right away, some room to maneuver with sidewalks, a little bit of landscaping, so we would leave that alone.
Okay.
Then we come down to basically Bridgeport Way and probably pick up this commercial property right here on the corner, which is currently an open space area, your entryway, just to include that. We might do a little bit of fidgeting down here as we look at this a little bit more. But this will get more solidified as we go through the process. We'd have public meetings. We'll talk to stakeholders, there's an EIS, there'll be options. So these lines will firm up over time. But right now, I understand what the council's direction is.
Sounds good, and thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, knock on Formica. Okay, very good. So you see items tentatively scheduled for the February 18 regular city council meeting, including the AWC retro refront presentation, the combination awards by our police chief, authorizing the execution of agreement with Bergen Associates for this work we just chatted about. Apparently, we're going to donate or receive a donated RAV4, lovely. Approve the transfer, the non-exclusive franchise, as you see there, and a few other little things, including the appointment of a council member to the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board. With that, we turn to reports by the city manager. Sure.
Have you and the mayor at all discussed someone joining the Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board about how that would be? Or are we going to go into that sort of without an idea what we're going to approve and have an appointment thing on the docket without a name that we're going to...
The short answer to the question is no. The mayor has not been present for the last few weeks. So we have not had a chance to chat about that. If anyone has a burning desire to be the appointed person, I think, let me know, and I'm happy to communicate with the mayor. We can chat about that. And then we can put a name for approval on the consent agenda. Otherwise, my thought was it's going to be something for discussion, and we'd have a motion to appoint and approve. Right? Yeah.
Well, I'm certainly willing to tell the mayor that I don't want to be appointed.
Got it. Duly noted.
That, you know, so that we can simplify the process.
No, very good. I appreciate that. I think, we'll chat more about it next week, but I'm thinking it probably makes sense for somebody who is doing some economic development stuff. You know, probably should be me, but I don't know if I want to schlep up to Seattle. That's part of the problem, but we need to think about it. Don already goes up there, but he's already got a voice on the transportation, I think. Does he want to do this? Have you talked to him? Okay, I'll definitely give him a call. Yep. So he's currently remembering the Alamo tonight, so he's down there, so I'll give him a call tomorrow. What's that? Yeah, this is the next one, I think. So Mr. Branstadder is a vociferous no for the appointment. Very good. That means Mr. Simpson may be it. Just kidding. We'll come up.
Well, I would sort of think you're one of the lines of Mike.
We'll have a discussion.
Yeah, I'm trying to be preemptive, isn't it?
Right. I get that, I get that for sure. And then, I skipped over the census update, but we'll chat about that next week. But it'd be amazing to know if we've actually moved the needle from 58,850 to anything north or close to 60,000. It's been flatlined for 20 years.
If we could just reach the number that's on the plaque in the hallway.
We're hopeful. Mr. Coffield, floor is yours.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Good evening, council. First off, I'd like to just recognize Mary Dodsworth, our park and rec director. You know, sometimes it's the little things. You know, when we talk about image and improving the reputation of our community, it's, you know, sometimes one person at a time or, you know, one initiative at a time. And I think I had sent this to you, but, you know, the city of Lakewood is featured prominently on the 2020 Washington Festivals and Events booklet. And not just on the front cover, but we're also on their website. And actually, there's a couple other places within the magazine that were in there as well. You know, that doesn't come very easily, given the number of types of events and activities are here in the great state of Washington, especially during the summer. So I just wanted to call that out because, again, it does get to, you know, the positive image that we are portraying by this type of an event and many, many other things that we do here, here in Lakewood. And I didn't want that to go unrecognized. Wash dot rail, the state rail plan. I think I'd send out a draft letter. I know Councilmember Branstadder had some comments back. I believe we have the final draft in front of you. This is due to the state by this Friday, February 14. So unless there's any other final comments or suggestions, or if there are, let us know. And maybe Deputy Mayor, if it's okay, we'll kind of leave that open till close of business tomorrow. Otherwise, we'll move forward with that. And actually, I'd like to thank Shannon Kelly Fong and Tiffany Spear for actually going through that report and reading it all and pulling together what I think is a really nice, you know, letter stating our position. And really, a crux of that is the continuation of the multimodal infrastructure analysis that we're trying to get. And actually, Wash Dot Rail strongly recommended that we include that in there as well. Lakewood Sister Cities Association, so, long story short, they would like to see the city of Gim Hee, which is Republic of South Korea, transition from a friendship city to an official sister city. And quite frankly, given the relationship we have with them, really, nothing would change. But what would happen is there would be a ceremony that would occur when they're out here this July as part of our Summer Fest and visiting with us. And it's actually, some of you, I don't know if anybody was here in 2006, but went through a similar process when the city of Danshou, which is in the Hainan province, which is actually a whole island part of the People's Republic of China. So there would be an official ceremony that we would go through. So, and the Sister Cities Association is looking for some direction from this body to be able to do it so that they can kind of get their groundwork going in terms of planning for this. Also, the agreement would be between not just the two cities, but also the Lakewood Sister Cities Association as well. So, but just wanted to put that out there and see if that was okay because we would like to get back with, again, the Lakewood Sister Cities Association.
Seems like we've got some head nods. I don't see any opposition to it.
Yeah, I would just say that Gim Hee, which is a, really the size of Tacoma, has relationships with seven other cities other than Lakewood. And each of those relationships is a sister city relationship. And so, you know, they're desiring to bring their relationship with us onto the same level or at least the same discussing because they, in their view, they don't wish to treat us any differently. And so it's important to them, even if it may not be significantly impactful one way or the other to us.
I don't know what's involved in those, but I know from my growing-up days in Spokane, when they had these sister city connectivity events, especially the big, you know, introduction, they would usually have some sort of special tree or plant or something because they've got that incredible park in North Spokane. So if there's some sort of specialty tree that we could maybe plant near the pavilion as part of Summer Fest. You know, I think those sister city gardens are kind of cool for people.
They're Gim Hee's city trees, Ginkgo.
Would it live here?
Which do grow in this climate.
Well, there you go.
Well, we will let them know that City of Lakewood is all in on that. Partners for Parks. Partners for Parks has been very involved here in the Lakewood community for a number of years. Matter of fact, they have raised $335,000 in support of a number of programs and initiatives here in Lakewood, much of it being invested in Fort Silicon Park. You remember back in 2017 and '18, they initiated and paid for feasibility study of what it would take to renovate the H Barn. And they came here and they made a presentation to you, and they said that they would go back and continue that work. So where they are with the go-back is they would like to essentially conduct a feasibility study to determine the effectiveness of whether or not a public-private partnership could be pulled together to raise $6 million to renovate that H Barn. And that's the current cost estimate in today's dollars, by the way. And by the way, from a public standpoint, you know, for example, lodging tax monies would be a perfect fit as a part of that, going to our state delegation and asking them for money to help and things along those lines. But really, the big heavy lift is to, and they got a firm that they've identified, the Phoenix Rising Consulting Firm, which would go out and actually raise money from some pretty deep pockets. So the cost to do this is $45,000. Partners for Parks has $25,000. And they have come to us and asked if the city would contribute $20,000. I would like to point out that the city has not contributed anything to the work that they have done to date. And certainly, you know, for Silicon Park, you know, the implementation of that master site plan is a city council goal and part of your vision. So I would offer a couple of options. One is that we included in our carry-forward adjustment as an allocation of one-time monies. The second option is, and they're willing to do this, is to schedule the Partners for Parks folks, similar to what they did in 2018, is to come and talk to this body about what they want to do and why they want to do it. And then, at that point in time, this body could make a decision on if they wanted to move forward with that, with funding that task.
Go ahead, yeah. So what would, what's the proposed result of the study? I mean, not the actual result, but what do we have at the end of the day?
Basically, an outline of how to come together and cobble $6 million over a number of years to make the improvements at the H Barn.
A how-to or a feasibility?
My understanding, it would be not just a how-to, but whether or not it could be done. Because $6 million is a lot of money.
Here's my comment on it. So, two things. If they're really willing to do it, 20 grand is not going to break us. But it's always been a little bit of a be in my bonnet that we're considering with goodwill meaning folks to investment of $6 million in the H Barn. When, if we're looking for public-private partnerships, I don't know why we don't turn attention to the Lakewood Theater, where we've just spent $2.2 million on this incredible street front improvement. And it goes every week. Someone asks me, what's going on, if anything, with the Lakewood Theater? And years ago, when I first got on council, we did, I know, a $25,000 study, feasibility study, just what it would take to bring it up to ADA standards to get it kind of open. And the price tag then, which of course, that was then, this is now, was $2 million. And we thought, oh, my God, how could we ever come up with $2 million? They're asking for $6 for the H Barn. So my thought is if at some point we ever want to put some money into a public-private partnerships study with the private ownership, Graymore, who currently owns Lakewood Theater, I'd love to see us put some money in that direction.
Is there anybody, there's no organized...
Exactly. We would have to be the impetus on that because we can't seem to get those guys to do much. Yeah, yeah. And so I don't mean to sidetrack your ask, John, so I would be in favor of the 20 grand for it, but I just throw it out there for a broader discussion about where are we investing with public-private people to get really good quality gathering spaces where it makes sense?
And Deputy Mayor, there's no rush on this. So again, you know, if we wanted to invite in Partners for Parks folks to come talk to you about this.
Yeah, I think...
John and then Mike.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know if the meeting will, really, we know what's ahead of us here. I'm of two minds about this. I'd like to see the H boughs, H barns restored and that become a cultural center in the park. And yet, I can go through that park, and I'll have people very clearly tell me that they think the park is going away and it's becoming an event center.
Right. Overbuilt.
Overbuilt. And then you, Deputy Mayor, made a very good point. If we're going to engage in a kind of a public-private partnership, seems to me we might want to focus on, at first, sub-area plan area, the center in the heart of the city that we want to grow. And that Lakewood Theater would be the place that I would target to. So, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with the twenty thousand dollars, but I, I'm, I'm wondering if maybe we're not, we, maybe, there just isn't, there's a tendency here to overshoot the mark a little bit, and that maybe we need to be looking at other areas in the city rather than at the H barns.
Because I bet you could raise boatload of money if you had the right fundraiser.
I do too, yeah.
Hard to say.
Yeah, I, I also don't have a problem with the twenty thousand dollars to take a look at the fundraising feasibility. But I'd want to provide the twenty thousand with a clear understanding that that's not an indication that if the study says, well, this could be done in six years, um, that, um, that then we're on board. Um, you know, a, a couple of things is that the H barn in, in this proposal was there, it was not designed as a, something that could be used for events but would be open to the public otherwise. It's designed to solely be an event venue and locked up, um, otherwise, in, in, at least in the initial concept that they had there. So, uh, uh, and, and I too can think of several, the, the Lakewood Theater, but there are a couple of other things that were, 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 were doing that were in the, the downtown area plan, you know, a, a public-private partnership around an open space that was in the plan, considered to be a park or, uh, in, or a, a public-private partnership for the Green Street Loop, where there are parts of that loop that could be developed by, 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 by private entities, where the city could work to do some things to do that. So, um, uh, but, uh, y- y- you know, I, I, it's, and then I'm a little bit leery about things, for, for the park. I mean, I like the pavilion, and the pavilion turned out really well, and it is an attribute to the park. But the percentage of public dollars to private dollars that was originally proposed when that project was first surfaced became very skewed to be a much greater percentage of public dollars than of, than of, than, than of ones that were doing all that. And I wouldn't want to see that happen with a six million dollar project, uh, that they had to, to go on, uh, to, uh, to, 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 to do that. But, uh, I'd be interested in reading the results of the study.
Yeah.
You know, to do that. But I think about when we had our legislators here, okay, where they were, um, skeptical about putting really, really big ticket items in Fort Silicon Park continually as opposed to being willing to support things more broadly through, through their districts and, and, and in the city. So I'm not quite sure that we, we see that if we, that starts to become an ask for that, become, I don't see that ever becoming, uh, a legislative priority that we could express with a straight face.
Anyone else that we've got? This firm?
I'd need a heck of a lot more information before I'd be willing to let twenty thousand dollars go out the door to something that is mostly a fundraising feasibility study. I think somebody else, I think that's more of a private venture. I'd rather see us leverage our dollars to seek grants for infrastructure and, and, and support the project in other ways.
Ms. Moss?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I think that, that twenty thousand dollars for the feasible study, it would be something that, that's how we've done it in the past, to get an idea as to how it would go. But to me, and you've heard me say this many times, the theater, it's a colonial center, to me, is Lakewood. So if we were going to do something, I would really like to see us do something with that theater and bring that back to life in some fashion, if we could. Because that's, I mean, that's Lakewood. And if we're going to do the downtown area, it could start there. That's my.
Agreed. I hate to keep, kind of pollinate one flower, and then we go to another one, and then we do another one. It's nice to actually get some aggregated activity in one spot and really do it right. But, okay, so, I'm going to make sure the manager has the consensus he needs. So, I hear yes from Mr. Bransiter, yes from Mr. Simpson, yes from Ms. Moss, you're okay, Mr. Bokey, so you got your consensus for the twenty grand.
So the consensus would be to put it in the carryforward adjustment, so it's not a done deal until you actually vote on it, so.
Right.
You know, so I just wanted to clarify.
But I think it's not a done deal until they come and make a presentation, is that right?
Would you, I, I, you know, gi- given what I've heard here this evening.
Sounds like she would like to have.
Yeah, given, well, actually, given what I've heard from all of you, I would strongly recommend to invite Partners for Parks to come talk to you.
Yeah.
And they're, and they're, and they're, and they're willing to do that anyways, you know, so.
Let's do it.
I was just.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Okay. Well, moving on, um, some really great news to report on a federal priority. So Representative Rick Larson, along with support from a nu- number of, uh, congressional representatives from Washington State, introduced the Build Up Grant, or the Better Utilizing Investments to Leverage Development for Underfunded Projects, which is, was formerly known as the Tiger Program or the Tiger Cub Program. And, uh, so that got dropped on, on Friday. We actually spent some time the last three weeks or so providing some proposed language suggestions to make sure that, you know, Lakewood would be able to compete for funds there as well as other cities. And what it's going to do is it's going to allow cities between twenty and seventy-five thousand, uh, population to be able to apply for these. Right now, we're not eligible. This is, so if this passes, this would be phenomenal. It would actually, um, allocate thirty percent of the total funding, so this year it was a billion dollars. So that means it would be, you know, three hundred and thirty-three million dollars that would be available for cities between population of twenty and seventy-five thousand. Yes, and, uh, south of Tacoma and, uh, north of Dupont. Right, with I five running through it. That's correct. That's, that's, we were not able to get that language in there, Deputy Mayor. We tried. So, so, um, the funding, and, and, and this is all based on jobs and economic development, and, uh, you have to actually do a fairly sophisticated, uh, benefit cost analysis. Matter of fact, this body appropriated money in the current biennial budget to be able to do that, if in fact this comes about. The, uh, the project that this would work on would be the implementation of the infrastructure, for example, the green loop, um, within the Town Center Subarea Plan, the roadwork, the boulevard, the sidewalks, all of that. So going after, for example, a twenty-five million dollar Build Up Grant would not be completely unheard of. Uh, that's kind of right in our wheelhouse. We will have to come up with, I believe it's twenty percent. Um, but again, to be able to, to be able to compete for this is absolutely huge. And really, at this point in time, the, it's, the Town Center Subarea Plan is really the only area that would probably work at this point in time where we are today. But again, good news has been introduced. Knock on wood, hopefully, uh, it won't take Congress. Um, I, I, I think I had mentioned to you before in a previous life, I was working on this, I've been working on this for about ten years. So here we are, here we are. So it's good, it's good. Also on the federal front, uh, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, which has been appropriate, has been not just adopted, but also funds appropriated fifty million. So, um, the program will be managed by Office of Economic Adjustment. They expect to have the applications available later this summer. They have to make the decision to appropriate the funds by the end of their fiscal year, which is September thirtieth. So that's the good news. The not-so-good news is apparently Department of Defense is not supportive of this, because it's defense dollars that are being allocated outside, outside the wire, and the folks in the Pentagon get a little, get a little cranky over that. So that falls under the umbrella of the facts, well, are, 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 while interesting or irrelevant, Deputy Mayor, and that's just the way it is back there. However, um, our, our, our members of Congress, including Mr. Heck, are standing by to, how shall we say, have to place pressure in the right points to make sure that this does not get sidetracked, and in fact, the program is adequately implemented. So, um, just wanted to just to give you a courtesy heads up on that. By the way, surprise, surprise, one of the key, um, one of the key attributes that all the applications need to have is it needs to be shovel-ready. So, lo and behold, of course, because ours is the JBLM North Corridor Infrastructure Project, so, so we'll be ready, so we'll be ready. So our, our visit back to Washington DC this past Decent, December was worth its weight in gold. Also, uh, Congress continues to have, um, conversations about, um, bringing back federal earmarks, which actually are called, uh, community project funding for cities and counties. And so it kind of goes hot and cold, it's been getting hotter later, um, more often than not, and, um, so that's, that's a good sign. Not going to come back during this kind of current budget cycle, but they could come back in the next, in the next year or two. Certainly, the House of Representatives, and it is bipartisan, seems to be more than lukewarm to it. The Senate, not so much, um, but sometimes these things take a little bit of time, so just wanted to report on that. Um, and by the way, um, the, the typical funding for a, um, for a community project is typically in the area of half a million to maybe two million, but usually half a million to a million is usually kind of the, you know, the, 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 the area of, 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 of funding, or has been in the past. And, and by the way, earmarks have been gone for now, going on ten years, on ten years. At the state level, um, the Department of Commerce came out with, um, the, the final report on the Defense Community Compatibility Account that was approved, and, um, actually, the Lakewood and SSMCP is featured prominently, so, uh, we represent five of the seven projects. So next steps, um, actually, SSMCP, including the City of Lakewood, are working to try and get funding assigned this session so that they can begin work on implementing this. And then the next budget cycle, which is this time next, next year in front of the state legislature, is to ask for funding and support of this. And I think, as you all know, Senator Conway, this is his, uh, what we jokingly refer to as the BRAC account. And so asking for fifteen million on an annual basis to be able to do project like this is not out of the ordinary. So, um, so some good news there. So, um, more to follow.
That's state.
That's correct, that's correct.
Does it have any federal matching money, or is it a state and lo, state with local?
So, no, um, so if you provide matching.
You sent it to us.
Yeah, if you provide matching monies, you'll probably do a little bit better. Uh, like, for example, our project, uh, we submitted for a portion of our JBLM North project, and so, um, it's like two-point-five million is what we, the project costs, but, but, you know, we included in there that we would provide twenty percent or four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand. So, but it doesn't have to be.
So like on that one, when I looked at it just a little while ago, it included the last part, the proposal that you had for the JBLM North Gate, it was that last portion going on to the.
Or you could say that that's, that's the beginning portion.
Or the beginning portion, that's a better way to look at it. I stand corrected. The beginning portion that starts at north where the.
At the base.
At the base.
Yeah.
And to Washington or something in there, that Edgewood area.
The lazy ass.
That's the proposal for that, and then that, then that would tie in with the federal.
This could, this could be additional, this could be additional match to the federal.
Okay.
Or vice versa.
Okay. Thank you.
To be determined.
Okay.
And that would all be part of the rulemaking that Commerce would go through as well, so there's a lot of work to be done here. But the fact that we're in the report and on the list, actually, the Lakewood Water District is in there as well, we were working with them on this. On the economic development front, um, I think you're all familiar with the Koreans Women's Association, which is a very, very, um, powerful organization with a lot of money. Um, they are coming to Lakewood, and they're going to be moving into an office building, um, over by, uh, the intersection of South Tacoma Way and Five Twelve on Perkins. So, um, taking a, taking the whole building as a matter of fact. So the Stockman Properties, the two pieces of property adjacent to Washington Park, um, on Military Road have, have sold, so they're, they've sold, so I just want to give you a heads up on that. However, um, there is a piece of property that could be available over by American Lake Park, uh, right across the street. There's a corner, a, a, a corner parcel there that there's nothing on it. The property owner has approached the city, uh, might have some future information for you on that here in the next, uh, few weeks or month or so. Association of Washington Cities is recruiting for board of director positions, so this is an even-numbered year, which means the even-numbered positions are up. And, uh, position six, Lakewood is a part of that, as well as the at lar, and it's for a two-year appointment. And then the at-large position, um, is a one-year appointment, which is, doesn't have a position number to it, but the at-large positions are up every year. Um, but if any of you have an interest in applying for, um, for that, um, the information is online, and if there's anything we can do to help you, just let us, let us know that. Uh, PSRC Federal Grants, so here we are, the two-year cycle. So here are the projects that we're recommending. Two are to continue the design and right-of-way that we've already initiated. The first one is Silicon Boulevard, construction funds from Weller to Eighty-seventh, because right now we're going to do Eighty, Weller all the way up to essentially Custer and Eighty-Eighth. So the grant would be over three million dollars. The second one is South Tacoma Way from Eighty-eighth to Eightieth, which is the boundary of the city. So we have the design monies. PSRC gave us the design monies two years ago, so we, we're, we're, we're putting in for three-point-four million to consider the cons- construction of that. That's the last segment of South Tacoma Way Pacific Highway that we have to, that we have to do. We're also requesting funding for two overlay or preservation projects. Um, one is One Hundredth from Lakewood Drive to Lakeview, um, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand. And then, um, South Tacoma Way from Ninety-sixth to Silicon Boulevard, that whole stretch, that was one of the original, um, areas that the city, when the city first incorporated, we rebuilt, and that roadway is getting chewed up. And so, Silicon to Ninety-sixth. They, they, all these, they have sidewalks, yes. The first two do not.
Yeah.
These are just the overlay.
What was the other one?
One Hundredth from Lakewood Drive to, uh, Lakeview, um, in front of the Lakewood Industrial Park. And then continuing on the other side of Lakeview, One Hundredth from Fortyth to Lakeview, that whole section in there, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we came around the corner on Fortyth, but we got that whole intersection that's still missing some, some, some work, so we're a, we're asking for design money on, on that one. And then the sixth project is Nianza, which is design money to consider, to do the third component around Gravel Lake. So those are six projects. We will, now, in two thousand and fourteen, we got funded for six projects, but that will not happen again. That was, I don't know what hap, we, I don't know what happened there. We did really well, didn't we? But if we can get two or three here, like an overlay and one of the, actually, I'm pretty confident that we'll get the construction monies for Silicon Boulevard from Weller to Eighty-seventh, because PSRC has queued us up on design and right-of-way. I'm feeling pretty confident on that one. So, and then perhaps an overlay or two, or some design monies. Um, I, I think that's what perhaps we can, we can, we can expect.
So, so that would basically finish that. That would finish that portion of Silicon Boulevard, right?
No, it would not. Then we would have to come back in two years and do, and do construction from Eighty-seventh to Far West to then link into what Silicon just did.
Oh, I, I, okay, because I wasn't, I didn't know that we had plans to do that in front of the hospital, because.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the design.
Because it got the overlay and the recession.
That's part of the design, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. How good.
So that's, that's where we are. At your next study session, um, two weeks from today, um, as a follow-up to your last study session on January twenty-seventh, we're going to report back to you on what council asked for regarding the one-tenth of one percent or the current chemical dependency and mental health sales tax. So we're going to report back to you essentially on what counties have done with that money, because it's, other than the city of Tacoma, it's been all the counties, pretty much, in Washington State, except for Pierce, who have implemented that.
We know what they do.
So, the latest update is that Pierce County, uh, the county council is looking to take action to implement it and could be as soon as March tenth. Um, the county council will, well, does not need a simple majority, they need a supermajority to put in a tax increase, so they need five of the seven to vote yes. And I think those of you who are here a couple of years, or a number of years ago, um, they thought they had the five and they didn't. I had a chance to call the county, our county council member, who happens to be the county chair, Doug Richardson, on Friday morning, Friday afternoon, sometime on Friday, and I said, so any truth to this? He said, to be determined. And I said, so, I asked him, I asked him if he could do this. If it, could he, could, would the county council be willing to put off their vote until cities like Lakewood and Puyallup, which could implement it on their own, had an opportunity to have a discussion and make that decision before the county council puts theirs in place? He paused for a moment, and he said, yeah, I think I can do that. No guarantee that the full county council will agree to that, but as the county chair, he said that that would be something that he would, uh, you know, carry our water. So, more to come on that, but at your next meeting on the twenty-fourth, um, we will present to you what other, you know, essentially, counties have done and with using that monies.
Can you also, if the petition provides, if that has, why maybe here we can't be that special, three cities might like to.
Um, so, so really, the short answer, there's only one answer on that. The answer is that, you know, this is, the purpose of these monies, you know, mental health, chemical dependency, as in the title, um, is really a regional issue. And so the reason, the only reason that Tacoma did it was because the county, Pierce County did not. Every other county has done it, and there was an, and it was, and there was an agreement, and, and I'm just, so, so what you just said is ex- exactly it. Now, you do have the option to kind of come in and take your million and have it yourself, and then, so then you would have Lakewood with a pot of money. and then, so then, you would have Lakewood with a pot of money doing their own thing, then you would have Tacoma with their pot of money doing their own thing, and then the rest of the county doing their own thing. So, I will leave it to you on whether or not you think that's a good idea. That's your call. So, the one, the one benefit for the city of Lakewood is then you would be able to double down on the fourteen oh six monies. So, so you would go from ninety-seven thousand to one hundred and ninety-six thousand, okay. Switching gears, the state legislature, so they had cutoff on, on Friday, and so, you know, a number of bills died, a number of bills didn't die. I'm just gonna talk about the positive stuff. So, I was really, really excited, I got to testify on TIF, Tax Incrimin Financing, and it seemed to have been very well received. There was twenty-four people who signed up in favor, none and against, nobody, nobody against. So, though Mr. Trump did show up for the public hearing, I did make a comment at the end, I said, "I was just tickled pink that you're holding this hearing, and I'm so happy to be here and testify," because I said, "I've been chasing this for twenty-two or twenty years or something," and, but we were getting, people who were testifying, including myself, we were getting a lot of nods, understanding, you know, the benefit of this, so, nobody spoke against it, and, and it was all, and it was a clear, consistent, you know, message, good questions from the House Finance Committee as well. So, there's not a companion in the Senate, but again, we're, you know, you know, who knows what can happen this session? So, I'm hoping that's gonna continue to, you know, continue to move forward. Likewise, our local revitalization financing bill, twenty-eight oh four, is advancing, I went down there again first thing in the morning, got a call out late last night, hey, the finance, yeah, House Finance Committee is holding a public hearing on it, it moved out of local government, so that one's moving as well. Same thing, all positive, nobody opposing any, in any of these, so. And then, on the TIF, of course, ultimately, it's gotta go to the vote of the people, the people, you know, you know, it's the voters, so that's all we're asking the state legislature to do, is to put it on the ballot, constitutional amendment, yeah. Kind of on the not-so-good side, you know, our, there was several bills that, between myself and Councilmember Simpson testified in favor of, that our delegation from the twenty-eighth introduced regarding sexually violent predators, none of them made the cutoff, unfortunately, those three of them. I'd just like to point out again, and I know, I know I'm coming across as a wet blanket, but even with, you know, Paul's Bow, or in parts of Kitsap County, Kitsap County kinda feeling the pain, we're the only ones. This is not an issue for anybody else. This is only an issue for us, so I'm just, just pointing that out, so that's, that's the battle that we have.
Thank you. Yeah, I was talking to the city manager this afternoon about that, and I was kinda grumbling about how we, I, what did I say? I said, "This is what, I'm zero for four in testifying on these bills for the House and the Senate." But the city manager was correct when he pointed out, he says, "We're moving the ball forward," and we are, just haven't quite gotten into the end zone yet, but we'll get there, John, and I appreciate your allowing me the opportunity to continue that fight.
So, we'll keep at it. And then, our two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the intermodal study, multimodal study, rather, rather, we're probably not gonna get funding, however, it is being well-received. Our legislators, we're hearing positive feedback from them, we got a letter, five of them signed it. The letter has been sent on to the chair of the various committees that will take action here, but again, it's not because nobody wants to support our project, I think we do have support for our project, it's just that they're focused on I-976 and just money, it's just, yeah, that's exactly right, so. So, with that, Deputy Mayor, that's my report.
Hey, sir. Any questions? Charlie.
I do have a question. I'm excited that the Korean Women's Association is relocating to Lakewood, is there, what do you guys do in this kind of situation? Do you send a letter? Do you do something individually? I don't know if there's-
Yeah, I don't even think they've closed on the building yet, they haven't come in for TIs yet, so.
Who are their offices now?
South Tacoma.
Tacoma, yeah.
Well, we get to complete our lovely evening together with Councilwoman, Ms. Moss, Ms. Hidden Hero Moss.
That was exciting.
Very exciting, well deserved.
Thank you. I did attend the Asian Pacific New Year Celebration on Saturday, it was featuring the Vietnamese, it was packed. I mean, the, the audience, as well as the vendors, they were, they were, they were like sardines in there, but it was well done, a lot of good entertainment, the food was good, a lot of food vendors, so, it was very nice, I enjoyed it, and, and on Sunday, I attended the memorial service for Denise Yokum.
How was that?
She was really, it was really good, they had, it was standing room only, big celebration in the cafeteria area.
That's great.
Yeah, and she was really a mover and a shaker, and listened to all the stories that had been told from the different colleges that she worked at, so, it was a somber afternoon, but it was well-attended and very well-done, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Branstadter.
At the Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting last Wednesday, they, they received a presentation from the current CEO of Western State Hospital, and he spoke about the, their revision of their site plan, and, and of how they plan to move forward with the construction of a new, new hospital, and, and they're planning to, to build the new forensic hospital at the far west end of their property, where there is some open space, and then there's a couple of buildings that they would take down if, if they, if they have some permission, so it would essentially front Sentinel and Silicon Boulevard, that he envisioned that that would then result in some of the current buildings being demolished as they were no longer needed, but not all of them, and, and in part, that was because that until there is some other building in other parts of the state, forty-eight bed or sixteen bed or things that can handle civil commitment patients, that, it's, it's a long glide path for Western State Hospital to get totally out of the civil commitment business and exclusively into the, the forensic business. He spoke very positively, as if he was going to, like, be there for years, okay, so he's planning to buck that trend, and that, and, and our police chief spoke about the fact that he's, he, he's, he's a lot more open to talk about what is going on inside the hospital, as opposed to being protective of, of, of that, of that information, so I think that was all a, a positive thing going forward, that. With regard to South Sound 911, Ben advised that the consultant, who was looking for candidates to replace the executive director, has identified a pool of candidates that's being whittled down to where it's likely that there'll be a date either next week or the week after, where members of the South Sound 911 Board will be conducting a day of where they're interviewing potential candidates with the, with the goal of, before the end of February, identifying and making an offer to someone who is, who is there. I don't, I don't know who, haven't seen the list of candidates or who they are, than I was told, they were both internal and external from a national level of folks that did apply for, for, for that particular position, to be able to go, go forward to do that. That's all I have, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We talked about the one-tenth of one percent, that is gonna, it looks like it's gonna be on the consent agenda next week, and for final, on March tenth, but we'll wait and see what happens. The other thing that I was asked to mention is, we all, we received via email, a invitation to the opioid summit, this would be the second year that we've done that, that the, the county has actually put that on, and it's actually through Derek Young's office, and that's Friday, February twenty-first, at Pacific Lutheran University, eight-thirty to three. And last year, they brought in a speaker, I don't know exactly what they're gonna do this year, but that's out there, and I was asked to mention that again, that if anybody at RSVP'd, it might be interesting. I don't know if anybody from staff is planning to go or not, so.
Is that it? Wow, man, a few words. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you. Three things, going back a few weeks, I thought the Saturday Martin Luther King Junior Celebration was well-done, and I appreciate the role the city played in that, but I thought that was very well-done, and I was particularly impressed with the young man who gave the monologue entitled, "How Do I Look in the Eyes of My Enemy?" I thought that was very well-done. I also appreciated last Monday evening's meeting, joint meeting with the Clover Park School District Board. I thought it's, it's good to, like I say, be, be talking with those folks as we move forward. And then, on a different note, and Mr. Caulfield knows, again, of what I speak, since he put eyes on my daughter, my daughter did page last week for Representative Kilduff, and she came back just, let me put it to you this way, they have a little school that they go to, and they have to put together a bill, and my daughter, on one of those bills, said that she voted against it because they didn't produce facts. Now, who does that remind you of?
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Oh, and I also wanna point out that when I ran into Mr. Caulfield as I was leaving that last Wednesday, I indicated to him that she has a three point nine four four grade point average, and he said, and I quote, "That deficit between that number and four point oh is due to you." Thank you. True story, I didn't make that up.
Was it in history that she took a skid?
No. No, and it's, it's odd, because she does, I think, I think it was Spanish, but I mean, it was, but not history.
Yeah, that's right. Ms. Farmer.
Yeah, man. You guys are fun. This one's much easier to operate than the ones up there, by the way. So, I too enjoyed the, the MLK celebration, I snuck in during Ron Banner's remarks, we had a family thing in the morning, so I apologize, I didn't get to be introduced and all of that, but it was very well-done, and I complimented Kimmy and Ms. Moss after that, it was just wonderful. I got to tend my first neighborhood association meeting as an official council liaison this week, and Councilmember Branstadter was there, and helped me through a couple of the, couple of the talking points that that community would be interested in.
At Silicon.
At Silicon, and that was fun, that was a lot of fun. They have a lot of construction going on in their area, so they were obviously concerned about traffic impacts and construction, and when's it gonna get done? And there's actually a lot of stuff going on in the city, all over the city, and it has been for a couple of years, but it's particularly noticeable, and, and people ask me at the gym, they ask me at the grocery store, "What's up with that road there, and why are they, what's that big area gonna be?" And, and that sort of thing, and so, I was poking around the, the city's website, and I know there's a map, and there's some, some things, but I don't know if there's anything we can do to really just get the word out about all the cool things that are going on, I don't, fact sheets, one-pagers, I don't know, but I think we're doing a lot for the city, and I wanna make sure that credit is taken where credit is due. So, I put that out there.
I would, I would agree with you. I went to Woodbrook, and I was kinda like, "Oh, wow, this is kinda what we've been waiting for all these years." And I know there's other, there's already legals out there to talk more stuff.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You can wait a layer this summer, but the only way I hope for is to call me at my office.
I told my husband that, and he's like, "Oh, that's not good."
I'm already trying to figure out ways to even get to work, I'm like, "How much vacation can I take?"
Right, so I'm starting to put together my talking points for, you know, we've, we've been neglected, and, and, you know, it'll be amazing when it's done, and, "Come on, work with me here."
Come on, work.
Work with me. Several council meetings ago, I had posited the idea that the hundred and ninety trees that are coming down as part of said Onyx renovation, there might be an opportunity to, to make a connection with the folks that have the, with the Billingsleys, who are connected with the game farm and all the, the upgrading that they've done. Alan Billingsley has had some, he had his knee, knee replaced, and, and hasn't been in a position to do anything with that, so I, if, I just wanted to make that official, that there's no, those trees are part of the project, he'd let Mr. Busic know, I don't know that he was planning on anything moving forward, but I threw it out there. I also wanted to mention that the Pierce County Reads book is Girl Waits With Gun, and it's based on a true story about one of the first female deputy sheriffs, and it looks really interesting, and they've got some sort of an exemption with Kindle downloads, and so, you can go and download that sucker, Look at It Split, so, that's, it's very difficult to do that with eBooks these days, because the publishers have a stranglehold on them, so, I recommend, I recommend that book, thank you. Girl Waits With Gun.
Very good. Well, just a few items, I too appreciated the session last Monday with the school district, I think it's always good to do those. I then attended the community engagement leadership team with the chief, Chief Saro, on Tuesday night, where we chatted a little bit more about the theme, and more about the progress, how we're gonna put this together, this large meeting that's gonna be September of two thousand and twenty, that'll be a community engagement meeting with the focus about how we collectively, as a community, can provide a caring adult in the life of every child in the Clover Park School District, so more to follow on that. Need to chat with Mr. Bokey's spouse about her role with our sort of Leadership Academy, Parent Academy piece, we have some follow-up with her on that, so more to follow. The next day after that, I spoke to Lakewood Kiwanis, Ms. Grimley put together a little presentation for me that I used, and we tweaked a little bit from the other Kiwanis, and there's a Century Club group that I spoke to, so they really appreciated the material, give her kudos, the only one to construct a feedback, when we went through all the parks, beautiful photos of all the work that had been done, as I spoke to the Lakewood Kiwanis group, there wasn't anything about Kiwanis Park, and they said, "Hey, what about our park?" I said, "Hey, good point." So, maybe-
And it has a new playground.
Huh? Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, we need a photo eventually in our little giddy-up on that program, but they appreciate the information nonetheless, and they really liked the video, so I was able to show them the Build a Better Here video, so that was well-received on that. Terms of communication, we had two letters in front of us today, I don't know if you received both, one is a draft letter that the manager discussed, that's going to go to Wash.Rail, the other is a letter response to the present CEO of Lakewood Chamber of Commerce relating to the shopping cart issue, I think it's well-written. These are the kinds of things that, if it were me, I would encourage us to put on the Suburban Times and do a hyperlink to her letter in our letter on the Suburban Times, that way, the members of the public who are concerned about this issue, and there have been a few, could say, "Good point raised by the chamber, nice points in response by the city," that way, they get at least a full flavor for what's going on in terms of the issue, so, no good letter should go to waste, that's an opportunity to communicate to the public.
At least a small subset.
Small set, subset of the public, yes, indeed, that cares to look at Mr. Simpson's facts. On Tuesday, tomorrow- On Tuesday tomorrow, we've got the Public Art Charette, those of you who may have signed up for that, Sally Martinez put a little call out there for those who wanted to participate. The woman artist that we've selected is going to be putting on with a group of twelve or more, if you'd like to show up, an actual charrette about how to better engage the public in the public art process, and it's like a two, two-and-a-half hour thing tomorrow, I believe it starts at four. So if you're interested in participating, just kind of let Sally Martinez know, it's going to be here at City Hall, make sure I've got the time down for that. It wasn't wildly disseminated because she was trying to get like twelve people and not a huge gaggle, but if you'd like to go, it's going to be at the American Lake Conference Room on the first floor here, four o'clock to seven, so it's a, a bit of a commitment, but if you'd like to come, you're welcome. And then finally, what was I going to say, finally? I think we, we spoke a little bit about it when we were chatting about twenty thousand dollar study money for the H Barn, but, you know, again, I throw it out there, in my heart of hearts, with all the work we've done at the Colonial Center, we get great kudos, but it's always the back end, and what are you going to do about the Lakewood Theater? And I keep saying, you know, we can set the table, but the private market's got to come dying, we don't own the property, we'd love to encourage them to do something with the Lakewood Theater, but if there's a chance to do some sort of public-private partnership, we can at least engage in a conversation about what that might look like, and if there's a consultant to be retained to do some digging within the community as to whether there are potential assets to invest or to call for further investment to do something, that would be, I think, a huge benefit for this community, for youth theater and music theater performances and second-run movies, the Film, International Film Festival that we do, all those things that you could do in a grand theater-type thing, not in downtown Tacoma, but here in little old Lakewood, what a wonderful thing. So that would be a legacy, I'd like to see us leave someday. Getting from point A to B is something we need some help with, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, I don't think it's beyond the, the realm of possibility to have a good discussion with Partners for Parks and ask them to consider refocusing their efforts for the next few years away from the H Barn to the theater, because they are a very viable partner, that they, they have done some successful, although smaller fundraising type things beforehand, and they're, and they're, and they're, and they're, and they're well-connected, and I think if we could just say the order of things is that the theater should be the next, that they might come around with that, and if we can get them behind us, that gets, that's, that moves us in the right direction while keeping us and them engaged together.
I completely agree. The only hurdle, and it's not a de minimis hurdle, is we own the H Barn because we own the park, I think we have the ownership in that, we don't own the Colonial Center building, but if we could figure out a way to get them enticed to partner because we might be able to bring something to the table, then they may be willing to do something creative with that, and that would spur redevelopment, I think, of that whole, is that the East block of the Colonial Center?
Yeah, I, I, to Councilmember Branstadter's remarks, I, Partners for Parks really is parks, and, and this, this, the Colonial Center, the Colonial Theater presents its own challenges, and I think when you see the Pantages or whatever, you know, that's, that's Broadway Center, but Tacoma has ownership, I think, of all those. And then I think of the Mount Baker Theater in Bellingham, that when I was a kid, it was a, its own theater, but it's, it's very, it's like the Pantages, it's very large, and so you can do, actually do more things, right? You can do more live things when you have a large, I, I think it presents some unique, we have park issues, so if we, if we don't want them to work on the H Barn, there's other things that they can, I'm, I'm sure would want to get involved in, because it's not really a park thing, it's an arts thing, and so I think it's, it brings in a whole variety, different variety of people. We don't own the property, which I think presents some challenges, and, and we have invested, I mean, we've, we've put in a lot of money in, in building that to try to get this thing. There's a reason, and, and, and I don't know that reason, and maybe we do another feasibility study, there's a reason this thing hasn't happened, and we need to understand that, I think, before we go, before we go forward. I don't know why, and I don't, I don't understand, you know, the idea behind this was that it would be a catalyst development when we fix that thing up, and it looks very nice, and, and then nothing's happening, and I, and I don't know that I understand, I don't believe that I understand the economics of, of even putting a shop there, let alone redoing that theater, and who would, who would cover that, and, you know, we, they have Broadway Center in Tacoma, and the city of Tacoma uses them a lot, I mean, or now, now it's Tacoma Arts Live. It's my understanding, they actually take a lot of responsibility for those buildings, that Tacoma kind of is, they act, they, they say they're the owner, and they are the owner, but they don't do as much as you would think on a lot of that stuff, and then they have to go out and get money, so.
You have to get a consortium.
Right.
For sure.
I'm hoping that with the progress that we are making in the, in the Colonial Center, will stir up some interest in others coming in, once they see the improvements that are being made, hopefully that'll stir some interest.
Indeed. I've had some recent personal experience with efforts, but it's just a challenge over there. So without any further comment, I think we are adjourned.